Okay, we are back. Welcome back, everybody. This is night two of the budget review. Well, before we go too far much further, first of all, I love the slide, it's very budgety. The next slide is one that says, yes, who's an award winner once again? Way to go. I have nothing to do with it, it all goes to Megan, but, once again, distinguished Budget Presentation Award for our finance officers. So, we got an award winner we're working with, so let's hope we can make the numbers all work as they should. So again, tonight, we had to do some juggling, apologies for how that messes with everyone's ability to sort of get a sense of what we're talking about, but there was an issue with Harbor Master School and, in any event, Abby's now unavailable to meet with us on next Wednesday, so we had to shuffle the schedule around, and so she's up tonight. Tonight we'll start with Kerry, we'll move on to parks, and Mike will be here, Doug's come here a little early, thank you Doug. Then we'll move on to public works, go to cemeteries, Mike will speak on that, but obviously that's a department with many hands sort of working on that topic. Ben will come in to talk about the library, and then we'll go to Conservation Commission. They had hoped to be participating, but again, we have, we hoped that would be a Zoom situation, but, you know, we're not. We're on our third location of hoping to meet in a first place that could handle the hybrid meetings, so that's not going to work tonight. Then we'll move to harbor, and then the op-rows. So, a power-packed evening of fun here on Wednesday night. So, assessing. So, what we have here is, oh, hold on. This is, this is one where, again, a lot of this is about labor. The change in this, this department is predominantly driven by the change from sharing one, a one full-time position to a dedicated full-time position towards assessing. This would be an assistant level or assistant assessor level position, and they would support the assessor. We have decreases in career software because of the mobile assessor software we purchased a portion of last year. Don't need to fund that, once again. There are increases in the Camden contract largely related to the same cost of living adjustments that we've had year over year, and we're talking about elsewhere in this budget. A travel decrease based upon projected need, and the property revaluation. That, obviously, is one that is going to have a little bit more conversation with the select board in a couple of weeks, but it's driven, in fact, by, there was a statistical analysis completed last year. We still have rising values, and we contend with that sooner or later, and how we get there is going to take some doing, because the current plan, or the plan as we discussed a year ago, was to place a reserve, reserve money set aside for the next three years, and then conduct a revaluation. Well, prior to that, what was allowed us to buy us enough time to wait that long, effectively was to have a statistical analysis completed and have that update completed to all the values in town. That's happened, but unfortunately, the values keep rising. And how do we handle that? How does, how does the town handle that issue when there's other things at risk? So we can talk a little about that, that's something the select board will talk a little bit more about on the 13th of March, but these are sort of the big, the big topics in the land of assessing in this project.
So do we know how other, I know you said we'll talk about it, but do you know how other towns are handling that? I'm sure Camden's got the same thing, right? Even Rockland does, like, how are other communities handling that continued reevaluation?
Yeah.
Maybe that's, maybe I should hold that instead of getting to the assessor part.
No, I'll, I'll, I'll let Kerry kind of go into that, because I think he can, he knows those two towns better than most, so go ahead Kerry.
Yeah, we're in Camden, we just started a revaluation. I just started this week.
Okay.
And we're going to deal with the ratio as it is, because we're going to have the revaluation, it's going to be as of April 1st, 2024. And at that point, we'll be right on the market. But this year, we're going to have to certify 84%, which is really not desirable, but.
Is that mean 84% of the properties assessed?
84%. Now, the properties are assessed at 84% of their actual value.
I see, okay, yep.
And what that does, it cuts into things like, the biggest one that it, that it affects is personal property. So, in Rockport, I think we have 22 million in personal property. If we were certifying at 84%, I'd have to multiply that by 84, and we would lose all of that revenue and therefore all of that tax company. People, the residents out there, they get home state exemption, veterans exemption, they would only get 84% of the, so 25,000 becomes something more, 22,000 or something. So it has, what it really affects is because we lose that revenue, it kind of puts pressure on the middle. And I was just due to projection in Rockland that, Rockland has a lot more personal property, but this illustrates the point. If Rockland was to certify at 84%, they would add nine cents to the middle, just, just from what you lose on personal property. So that's, that's the kind of effect. So that's why we try very hard to maintain around 84%.
And did you say Camden does 84%?
Camden's going to be 84%.
Okay, so they.
Because we did, we also did an update in Camden last year, same time we did Rockport. So if we did an update this year in Camden, we'd be going three, three years in a row. So we decided just to hold fast and, and take our lips with the 84%.
Perfect.
As a rebound.
And we'll get to what we're going to do on March 1.
We're going to, well, I think, it's like what I was saying, remind me of the, 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 2025.
2025, okay.
For the interim staff in terms of what do we do this year with 84%? That's the, so, two-week question.
I know, you, you had mentioned 84% as our number, and Kerry just said 84 was Camden, are they both at the same?
We are. Actually, we're, we're, one, one of us is 84, yours is 85, Camden is 85.
So my, my next question is, during the time that you have done this, the information from the state is 18 months to two years old.
Correct.
So the information they're using, does that take into account what you did a year ago?
Yes, matter of fact, that's what allowed us to certify at 100% last year. Because what, what I, what I did last year was, I shot for 93, we did it in data that ended in, sales that ended in December. And so I shot for 93%.
Yeah, I remember.
Thinking the market would cool a little bit, and so by the time we got to April 1st, it'd be 91. Instead, by the time we got to April 1st, it was 87. And actually, when I say that we're at 84, we're actually at 76, but I'm allowed to add 10% to it. That's how much the market hasn't cooled down.
So, and I'm in a full, I mean, I guess where I'm going is rather than doing the spot, spot revals, the full-town-wide one would be two years?
Year and 18 months.
18 months, so in order for it to be an April 1st acceptance, that would be April 1st of 2027.
25. If we started, if we started next year, we would start this time next year.
24, yeah.
Right? And then 18 months from now would be April 1st, 2025. But 18 months from then, 18 months from then.
Yeah. Okay, no, I was just trying to move it.
So that gets to the question that you were posing in terms of what we do with the year over year, right? It sounds like you factored that in.
Yes, and, and, and so one of, one of the solutions to this, just talking outside of the budget first, I think, is to, is to do in-house adjustments more often. If, you know, we wait, we wait years, then we need to make a whole big deal of it.
Right.
But if we do it commonly, then we, you know, people will expect it, and we'll stay with the market much, exactly right. And then we don't have to have hearings, it doesn't have to be as formal a process, we'll keep you informed. And hopefully do that through, you know, education and all that kind of thing. One of the things I'm doing this year that's, that's different is I'm looking to hire a marketing firm to help us communicate with people.
That's a good idea.
And starting tomorrow in Camden, Caitlin and I are holding an upward called coffee with the assessors, and I'll do that in Rockport as well, so that every week we'll be available for people to come in and ask whatever question they have.
That's a great idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a really good idea.
So when you say you're going to do spot, are you going to, is it just on houses sold?
No, we use, we use this, this house is sold and then extrapolate those results amongst everybody. So just for a quick example, say 50 colonial sold, and they sell at a rate where I need to change a square foot rate on colonials, be based on those 50 sales. I would take that information and put it on all colonials, and that's how we do it. Take the sales and then extrapolate the results across every, every property, so that everybody's treated equally.
Regardless of where the property located.
Yes, yeah, because, because on, on buildings, their, their values are the same no matter where they are.
Square foot.
It's the land that's different.
Right, 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 okay, yep.
But there's grading in between those colonial, there's, you grade them based upon condition as well, so.
Sure.
You know, there's a colonial to this.
Well, and that, and that, thank you, it's a really important point to bring up. If we don't do the measure list that we're planning on, then what we're basically doing is we're updating that data. We don't know what condition the place is in, and, and so that's why we have to go around every once in a while and knock on doors.
Or if people have done renovations, we're not taking that.
Correct.
Yeah, like, another example, because I was talking with KRT Appraisal today, we're doing the work in Camden. So one of the things that I asked them to notate, a couple of things, one is whole house generators. Now, we didn't use, they, they didn't used to be too common, so they were just an extra feature every once in a while, but now they're getting more common. And so, and I'm, and I'm quite sure they add value to the property, so I want them to look at that. Another thing is solar panels. We don't tax them, and I don't intend to, but at some point we might, because they might show themselves to be a value addition. So if we gave them, gather the data now, put zero value on it, at least we know where they are, and if we ever have to tax them, we, we have, we have all.
And then doing those market adjustments, conversely, if the market goes down, theoretically, that would.
How much more time, 10 hours, does that take to, to continuously do the spot updates?
Well, the, the spot updates would be mathematical exercises. So, I mean, I did one in Camden in 2019, and it took about a week. So, as long as the data's good, we can, we can do that relatively reliably. At some point, we've got to go out and look at the data again, but just as long as we can, but, you know, and because I know the town so well, it's a better, really good idea of where a problem there is or not, so we can, we can focus on, we know where we'll be weak, we know where we'll be strong. It's a little bit easier, takes some time.
I have just one stupid question, really.
Stupid questions are welcome.
What happens if you do the refal and you don't come up to the same calculation that the state gets? Can you go back and say their number's wrong?
Yeah. Yeah, and, and I do, they send me the numbers every year and I go over them. As a matter of fact, I'm on the state board of property.
Right, yeah, I remember that.
We hear three kinds of cases. One is valuation disputes of $1 million or more, commercial properties, current use disputes, and valuations.
Yeah, because, I mean, if they come in and say that we're that low, but then you, we say, okay, we'll do a spot check and, comparatively speaking, over the next few weeks.
No, it's not really a spot check, what happens is they send me a list of their, they send me a ratio study. And I see what's on there, and I say, well, no, 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 that shouldn't be there.
Okay.
Or you're missing these segments.
Oh, I see, so they're just basing it on the sales that I've prepared, more or less?
Yeah, that's it, that's it. So, so I, I, I watch those, and if, and if we're in agreement, the math's going to be the same.
Right, but.
And I have disputed them, and, and each, each time they've made the change, so we haven't had to go to the state board over again.
So you don't have to go to yourself.
It would be awkward, but effective.
All right.
I have a question about the budget.
Hey, the budget!
Yes.
I can bring that.
The tax maps, 3845. When's, it says annual update, is the one that you currently have 2021, 2022?
Uh, no, the one we currently have is, I think it's 2019, but I, you sorry?
We did it before.
We used to do it, we used to do it every five years, but I, I uncovered a company, I, I became aware of a company called Nearmap that, so it used to cost us $29,000 for five years, we would save up for it. Nearmap is going to charge us $5,000 a year, and we'll get new photos every year. So same money, but we get updated every year.
How important is that, because they, it's been taken out.
Yep, you don't have to ask the manager that question, I put it in.
Good job, that's good, no, that's how we do this, right? I, I, I think it would be a valuable tool for not just the assessor, but the code, the planning office as well.
And so, police and fire.
Yeah, absolutely, the more accurate information you have visually top-down, the better off we are. But I was trying to limit new things, and, and to me, I saw priority in ensuring that personnel was addressed first and foremost rather than a newer project, but I think it's a worthwhile project, it's just, to me, it was not mission year project. Even though it was a good price.
How much difference might there be between the 2019 one that you have and one for 2023?
Quite a bit, I mean, any, any new, any new construction won't be on 2019, any demolition will be. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's useful, it's important, it's not critical.
That you'd like to have.
Absolutely. And the manager's me, he took it out.
Thank you, I'll tell us, assessing.
When do you, when do you, how do you recognize that somebody's overpaid for a piece of property and adjusting it off?
So when we do studies, we take off the top 15 and bottom 15%, figuring that we'll catch that. The people who overpay, they're eliminated there, the people who got an unconsciously good deal, there must be something going on there, they come off too. So the top 15, the lower 15, and we study the central portion.
We also sell that place there to each other.
Well, yeah, and so to help us discover that, we send out seller verification surveys. And one of the questions we ask is, did you know the seller? Do you have any relationship with the seller? Are you aware of any undue circumstances that forced them to sell in a condition that was, in a mentality that was other than just straight market sale? So we do our best to discover that, like I said, the, the short, the short way is just to eliminate the top and the bottom.
I have to ask that question because the house up from Tom Cox is sold.
Oh, yeah.
1.2 million.
Oh, yeah, don't, trust me, my house next door, 1.6 million.
Pascal.
Yeah.
The one next.
Sorry.
But see what happens, 1.2, 1.6, at some point, they stay in the study.
Wow.
Old man.
Well, yes, that's what I'm going.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, but, but Jim, that becomes what the market is, right? You know, so if.
Eventually.
Yeah.
Eventually, but not yet.
Well, I mean, I, I was banking on that last year, and I was wrong.
Well, let's add a third one, the one up on Mill Street that was on the records for 1.3, sold for 1.975.
Exactly.
What?
Yeah, and it was on the market for years.
Yeah.
And then it sells for just one.
4 million, on Mechanic Street.
Rockland?
Yeah. Right there. 37 Mechanic Street.
Oh, oh, okay.
Almost $4 million went on the market today. Anyway, that's what I get for watching real estate. I always know what's for sale.
It's not a good.
But, you know, it's, it's a good, it's a good point in terms of taking out the top and bottom 15%, because like, a bank's not going to give you a home equity line, I couldn't get a home equity line in my bank, for my bank for 1.6 million, and they'd say that's not the market value, so it's good that we do that with the assessing as well, because that's not truly what we are all able to access without homes.
It was skewed.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Wow.
Well, want to move on to parks?
Sounds good.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Kerry, appreciate it. Mike's in the back room, rolling around, looking for pieces of candy, I think. Doug's in here.
Mike, you can have a hot seat.
Okay, everybody.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's right.
From a park standpoint, I'm glad to say that Jonathan called me just before this meeting and said he changed his mind.
Oh!
Everything he's good improved, so we should keep this short.
Is that how that went? Oh, gee.
There's a little doubt.
Yeah. Well, Marcus said he did not get his nap today, and so that, I would, maybe something about that.
I got one.
How I've been, how, how I've improved, my old self would have had a comment for that immediately. But my new self would never have said that Jonathan must have lost his job and improved it before, before it came to himself. You didn't take the bait, Mike.
All right, well, parks. So, a couple key pieces, but I think it's probably more important that Doug's here, because he can speak certainly to Jim. A lot of this is, is a lot of it, obviously, impacted by Parks Beautification Committee's requests, some of which made it through the pen, some of which did not. But in terms of the high, the high marks here, miscellaneous contracts increased for Merrily Park and Memorial Park. Two different projects there, one of which is to deal with effectively a turf situation at Memorial Park that is somewhat, needs, needs to be addressed immediately. Certainly, good intentions and everything, looks beautiful and lush, but it is, it needs some, some help from the, the turf wizards out there. And then, secondly, Merrily Park is an opportunity to work with abiding landowners to, I think, work with the Parks Beautification Committee and look at the future of Merrily Park and how it can better blend into the landscape around it. You want to go into that a little bit more, Doug, feel free, but, you know, I think that there's some opportunities there as well, so supporting the Parks Committee's opportunities in those two areas. We also had some increases in plantings and park benches, with a number of park benches that are, just need to, need to go. There's a number of really good spots, and, and again, this is another area where if, if this wasn't the budget that I think it is, that may more items would have made it to that far-right column. But again, I'm trying to draw a line here where we can, I think we can, we can accomplish a few things that, that really need to, need to be accomplished, and hopefully fight another day on something that a battles, so. I don't see anything else, Mike, Doug, you want to add to that, or? Sure.
Now, I have a question, not specific for that, but you talk about the newly grubbed out area on Pasco Avenue.
Yep.
What is it?
That's the southwestern Amman Bridge that had become very much overgrown.
Yeah.
Over the last 25 years, and this summer, Mike took his excavator in there, cleared that all out, leveled it out. And again, we were hoping to make that sort of a more of a park area with a bench where people could sit. The problem we've run into is that to really be user-friendly, we'd have to have some sort of a solid fence put there, because it's a.
That's like a 50% problem.
Yeah, it's a terrible block off, and unless we take care of that, I don't think we can make it an attractive nuisance.
Is that the, the side of the road going down into the Marine Park, or the side over by Kramer Park?
Right where the little footpath, so comes up to the, to the, and the bridge, we're ready to go right way across.
Where the little steps are, you mean?
Yeah, way from, way from off High Street.
Okay, yeah.
Right at that.
Yeah, Steve Beveridge planted wildflowers in there one night, but I guess.
They went wild.
Yeah. You know, it's another area that has sort of just become overgrown. You know, I can talk about Merrily Park a little bit with that too, but that's the answer to your question.
So, anything you're, you're planning on doing would be meant to that? I mean, I, I would hate to think that you put something in there and DOT would come down and, and just tear it up and build a bridge, and then you'd have a chance to plan something after that.
Yeah, I, I think that was Jonathan's main concern. I, I think all we'll do this year is just put down some fabric and throw some wood chips on it to keep the leaves from growing back.
It's a good thought.
Yeah, I just got a notice from Main DOT, though, that they're really not starting on doing any bridge construction until 2025. So I guess that land will just have to sort of sit fall until then. You know, I understand we don't want to put in a $2,000 fence and tear it up, but on the other hand, we're losing a couple of good years of attractive scenery.
Well, I do think that, you know, our parks and our waterfront are some of our great assets, it's not our great asset. We just talked about property assessments, and people move here because of the beauty of the area, and that's it. They're not moving here for industry or big job, right? They're moving here because it's pretty, so I think it, it benefits us as citizens to invest in those areas, absolutely. So even if it's a small improvement that's temporary until the bridge changes, I think, to me, that makes sense.
Well, you know, thank you so much for saying that, because on our kind of annual report, we always have our introductory remarks, and it says exactly that. You know, Rockport is very special because it is so attractive with the harbor and the natural beauty and everything, and it really sets us apart. And so, you know, again, I like to tell the parks and beautification effort, because it does help with the tourism industry, but I also think it helps the civic pride around town.
Yeah, totally agree. Yeah, I, I think it's a, I think we could view it as a financial asset. So I do have a, a couple of questions. So I noticed that we purchased a new lawnmower, which I think is a great idea, but I thought we were told last year that we couldn't, we had a contract and we can't mow the lawns, or something like that, Mike?
There's contracts for certain places. The, the town office, the fire station, the harbor are being mowed.
That's right, I have notes for harbor, okay.
Buildings ground.
That makes complete sense. Thank you. And then the other question I have, and I know, like, I asked about this last year, but I don't understand why we need to have a sign to direct people to Walker Park. I mean, I live right down the street from Walker Park, I have for over 20 years, I have never once in my entire life, and I walk every day multiple times, have had anyone stop me and say, can you tell me where Walker Park is? I, I think that when we think about beautifying the town, I'd rather have a trash can there and keep it clean, and spend the money on that, and then spend the money on, I, I don't know why we need a sign to direct people there. It just doesn't make any sense to me.
And I think that was one of John's things that he has eliminated, was simply that our people.
John's, oh, because I just saw it on the summary, so I don't, I can ignore that, I can cross it out.
Well, I knew we could put, I mean, the board could put it back, or, you know, but that was one way I took out, yeah.
Yeah, but, yeah, those, again, just getting into some people on the Parks Committee that, that would be helpful if there are people from out of town, but.
I, I would say, again, I think people from out of town would prefer a trash can, and if we can revisit that issue, it's not, if this isn't a hiking trail, the carry-in, carry-out sign, to me, it's just kind of.
It's been a very successful program. On the Parks Committee, we've been very happy with the decrease in trash from the seagulls and things like that. It has been a problem before, so, you know, it's worked.
Well, that's good.
So, I still want to say, I know you could kind of get these trifle pamphlets in there, and I keep saying, why don't we use a QR code instead?
Where is that?
Just on the same thing, I, I, it turned, Eric, it's a turn out, that we actually have plenty of pamphlets, so we don't need to print it. But I still think we could develop a QR code that has the town map.
That's a good idea.
And the parks, and points them out on a QR. I mean, everyone, I mean, if you don't have one of these, you're out of date, because they don't even support coupons anymore, so.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it doesn't make sense not to keep up with that technology and just put it on a website that somebody can go, ooh, oh, I got the map.
Probably more cost-effective to. Probably more cost-effective to update.
Yeah, it'd be easy.
Eric Winter, the Parks Committee does a lot of the computer work at Cedar Works, and he indeed is working on QR codes for each park.
That would be nice, yeah. Yay. Thanks.
Let's see if these things work out, right?
That just makes sense.
Yeah, it does.
I mean, when I could sit at my TV and they go, "Oh, use your phone and take the QR code for the ad that's playing." I think we can figure it out for the town.
Exactly, yeah.
We could also hope to have a "Welcome to Rockport" sign similar to the ones out on Route 90 for down in the Glen Cove area coming north. You know, just trying to be consistent around town. Jonathan, again, you know, felt that was something that could be put off for a while, so that's again part of the signs that have been cut out.
I might, I might be able to get you another five grand if you could fix this one up here at the Camden Line. I've been asking Jonathan for a while, and we haven't gotten anywhere, but...
Yeah, the blue one?
Yeah.
It did get cut back, but the blue one is always an issue because it does, it gets overgrown.
Yeah, we, that's on our work list to go out there and cut that right back, so we'll take care of that.
And again, can we not go to the high school, can we not go to the high school wood shop crew and ask them to make a sign? Give them, have it be a project? They're looking for projects.
They are, yeah.
I mean, they could probably make something decent, and it would be a school project and shouldn't cost us anything if they're building it with donated materials and a school time.
Well, let me look into that, that's a good idea.
I think some of those, too, though, with signs, putting new signs in. Now, at some point, we've got to kind of slow down and put new stuff in if we can't even take care of what we got right now, which looking at, I mean, the signs that we had over at Marge Jones Field, which may not be part of Parks, but even still, the sidewalks, the roads, every other thing that we can't maintain, let's settle down and put new stuff in.
I almost got hit this week, by the way, with the no crosswalk.
No crosswalk, yeah.
Someone's going to get hit.
Yeah, that's why I recommend having them built voluntarily.
Yeah, but even for maintenance, you're still going to maintain the signs, you're going to maintain the garden around signs, you're going to mow around signs, you're going to clean up. We just need to try to eliminate maintenance because we don't have enough manpower.
Could I just say one word about Mary Lee Park? And this is for the Budget Committee, but also for the Select Board. In our budget, we have $1,000 to look at master planning for Mary Lee Park and remodeling. And this is obviously going to be a multi-year project. But the concept here is that since that park was put in in 1968, it really hasn't had any heavy-duty maintenance and work to maintain it. And it's a, it's an awkward park for people to get into and out of. It's steep and bad when it was set up in 1968, there weren't any ADA requirements. And so, what we're looking at is actually a major remodeling of the Mary Lee Park. When it was set up originally, half of that was paid for by a grant from the Interior Department. And when you look at the original documents, it was set up actually to have that amphitheater effect, and it shows a stage down on the lower area where there's a stage now. So, we've been working with Hace of Pete, who's a local landscape designer, guy, young fellow from Rockport, and he's basically donating his time to help us start to come up with how we can make that park a little more access-friendly. Redo a lot of the plantings that are really very old and overgrown now, so. I mention that because, A, there's $1,000 in the budget, which I hope will stay, but additionally, obviously, when you think about doing a major renovation on a park for the Select Board, you know, that's going to get people's attention, and they just want it out there on the table.
So, I know that, we haven't talked about Kramer Park at all. Is that because it's being allocated for the sewage treatment plant or? Because it is still used today by community members, and I mean, my kids use it, they fish down there because that's where the stream runs and everything, so, and I see people and they're using it all the time. So, it's definitely getting used, and it does need some maintenance as well. So, is that on the list anywhere or?
It was not, but not because of the war issues. We haven't had a meeting since that all sort of came out in public. Well, I'm sorry, we've had one meeting where John presented his plans to us, but we haven't had a meeting to sit down and talk about it and what our recommendation, either to support or not to support, we haven't had that discussion yet, so. You know, Kramer Park in our trifle brochure is actually sort of identified as a natural park. In other words, people go there to, we're a watch and look at wildlife, go for hikes and stuff like that. And we don't, we've never really pictured it as a polished park, sort of like Memorial might be or some of the other parks. But it could certainly use some, regardless of what happens there, it could definitely use a little bit of tidying up and trimming and brushing.
Yeah, I agree with that, that's kind of what I was thinking. I don't see it as where, so a place you'd go and you'd dwell plantings, et cetera, but like now it's blocked off. So, it's almost like, is it blocked off so we don't have to maintain it, like, you know, that's kind of... For winter, so, you know, I think it's just like the boardwalk down along there is pretty beaten up along the edge there. You know, the wood is all like kind of skewed.
We put a fence along there.
Yeah, yeah, so I think it's just, that's kind of what my thought process is, just cleaning it up so that it's a nice place to walk in for a watch, et cetera.
Is there still a picnic table somewhere in there? There used to be, but I don't have it.
The ones that are in there are in pretty bad shape, yeah, we took them out.
Okay.
They were pretty rough. Because that's on our agenda for next week is kind of an inventory of all the park benches around town. So, we'll get an update on that.
The picnic bin, table in there would be more inviting for people to come down and want, just sit down while their dog or whatever ones around or their kids are running around.
There should be at least one.
I think that's kind of my point, inviting is a good word for it, right? There's things that we can do to make it more inviting, because it is a really nice area, it's really pretty in there. And I take my dogs there a lot because now the Marine Park obviously gets so busy, so it's kind of a nice place that you can take and let the dogs run and the same thing with the kids, so. If there are just things that we can do to make it a little bit more inviting, I think it would get even more use than it does now.
There's a nice little nature trail that goes on up the river.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think a lot of people realize this is a place for cars to park.
Yeah. It's difficult because it's a long, narrow...
My way was built.
Yeah.
It was built for car parking.
Because that was the original and kind of from Mary Kramer.
And we did that.
Yeah.
Back when we seized waterfront for car parking and stuff like, right? Isn't that what happened all over town to me?
We're getting to a point where the crossroads is, there's not enough parking in Rockport. There's no place to put parking in Rockport, you know, and we keep inviting more people into Rockport. And we said, "Here, grab a little boat, we don't have, we don't have enough room," you know, but we want them to come. So, you know, I mean, there's going to be a heavy meeting somewhere where you just say, then all we can do, this is it, and it's like, as Stone said, let's maintain what we got.
That's why we look to the Select Board, Jim.
And Steve Beveridge would say, "That's your little bit of history." That's why it's there.
Yeah.
Well, we had, we had opposition to it, and that's why it was never paid. It's why, because, again, I said, you know, just because you have a parking lot doesn't mean it has to be paved. There's no reason in the world it can't be grass, but wood, I mean, you know, gravel and the grass.
Yeah, particularly because you don't need it really in the winters parking.
No, no. So, anyway. Is, is there, is there any old link parking in there?
In, in Pear Park?
Yeah.
Well, it'd be interesting to do it.
Well, they let them, they let them put both, well, trailer lots.
Those are the long-term.
Right.
People are supposed to go there and do that.
But, no.
Yeah, well, don't waste a thought.
No, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna go. No, it works at 7:30, so I'm not gonna go.
Don't waste a thought.
No, it's just, it's, you know, at Jim's point, right, we have these competing, there's so many, we've never had more competing interests in Rockport Village than we do right now. My whole life, we've never had so much tighter, more fit. How do you make it all go? I mean, we, you know, whether it's, you know, conversations about saunas at the harbor or parking or hotels or parks. This is, it's sort of part of where the conversation is right now, is everything's tighter and closer, and we have to figure out what our values are, what do we want, what do we see, you know, and, and right, I mean, we talk about parks, but to Jim's point, he's right, you know, part, there is a, there's a parking part of that park that was part of how it came to be, and how do we do everything in balance? And that's, that's a hard, I don't know, we'll figure it out here tonight, but...
Yeah, we need to have thoughtful planning because things change, right? So, when that was built for parking, that was a different time. Today, we're in a different environment, so we need to be able to change and adapt and have thoughtful planning for today and the future. And that's, that's the key as well, is we need to have planning that gets us through the future, right? Like, there's got to be a strategic plan for the community, that's what we need to have.
That's right.
Otherwise, it's going to always just be piecemeal.
Right.
Always whatever's being thrown at us, we need to have a strategic plan.
Yeah, you're going to think beyond this year where we are right now, five, 10 years in the future, yeah. Anything else on Parks? Oh, I got, I got the wrap it up signal, so. It rolls that, Doug.
Good, thank you very much for the work that you folks do. I know it can be difficult and contentious at times, but someone has to do it. Do you know when the library is expected to be done tonight? Is it worth seeing it? Eight o'clock, yeah. Sure hell, I'm kidding.
Case the highlights. Be on the 11 o'clock news, don't worry about it.
Thanks.
I count on like 7:20 to 7:30. It'll probably end this getting with what I see coming up.
Call it works. Okay, so, obviously, the biggest, the biggest factor here is the union contract. Union contract obviously was driven by results of the salary survey. I can't say that that's process was as smooth as it was on the police side thing, but relatively was something we were able to accomplish within four weeks' time. What took the longest was actually getting the officers of the union to sign the contract, so go figure, I'm that part of it. You know, it, again, going to the table, we're looking at a lot of issues, both what the market was paying for public labor, you know, public, public works labor, but also what other private companies nearby are offering. Your Farley's, your JBI's, your, you know, whomever, name them. They're, they're all out there, and what they're paying is the market we're drawing home and pulling home. And hold on to, let's do, yeah, to hold on to folks, yeah, that way to support.
And also, you're looking, you know, to the point you gave a minute ago, that we're looking towards the future with having a mechanic that's dedicated to doing work for us so we don't have to drive trucks to St. George. You know, and there's a lot of stuff we can do in-house which will be quicker and save time, et cetera. So, there, there's a lot of thought going into that.
Absolutely. So, you know, that's, obviously, we have, we have a number, we have, you know, eight employees covered by that union contract. We have a number of employees who likely will be retiring over the next year. And so, this will be a year of change in that department. But I think we have some ideas in terms of some, some, I wouldn't say middle management, but some forces, some of our longer-term employees to sort of step up into the fold and be in some leadership, provide some opportunities for growth and development, whether it's mechanic position, whether it's a crew leader position, there's opportunities for them to sort of step up and, you know, it, I think there's some value in making sure, hey, we're all in this and we're all linking arms, but to reward, to reward their development and reward those who want to step forward and do something a little bit above and beyond, I think is a, is a good thing. We have a number of employees, I think, that, that, you know, should be considered that, that well, so, even so. So, beyond the union contract, GovPilot, that's a decrease. For those familiar with that program, that's the program that houses our work order system that we launched in October. So, it's, we're still gaining, gaining on that side of it. I think it's been an easier transition for us on the building to ground side, largely from time of year than anything else, but I think it's, it's actually gone probably better than I anticipated, honestly, in trying to take all the needs, people's phone calls and emails and, you know, all of those things, and put them into a system so that we don't miss, we don't lose, we don't find a way to to lose track of, you know, the needs that are abundant around there. And that, that doesn't need to come from citizens, they come from employees, they come from town managers, they come from everybody's, they come from public works employees. We just try to make sure, hey, let's not miss this, let's not forget that. It can seem like a silly thing, but the things that you need, with the number of miles this town has, miles of road, you'd be surprised how easy it is to lose track of those sort of, you know, little things that when you live nearby, it's important, but when you're simply driving by, it can be harder to do. So, this, I think it's been a good, good project, and I think it will through with time. So, the buildings repair and maintenance, that was moved to buildings and grounds as we did with the Town Office Building. We talked about that last time. An increase in gravel. Mike has a number of different projects, and there's seemingly an ever increasing need for more gravel. And as we look at where the roads are going to be back within the next four weeks, boy, isn't that true? Originally, when we had put this budget together, Mike and, and I supported the idea of purchasing an excavator, a larger excavator than the one we have, largely because we're taking on more projects, bigger projects. At present, we've been renting a good-sized excavator for, in the summer months, and we have more work than we have time, in the time that we're renting the excavator for. But like so many things in this budget, when we got down to it, I just couldn't see us adding that this year. I think it's important, so there's an increase, a corresponding increase in rental equipment to account for the fact that I think we need an extra month of that excavator to complete some of the work we need to accomplish. But the purchase of the excavator is not in here.
And in that rental, I'm just saying, with, with what you see from rental numbers, that's just doing bare minimum stuff that we can't put off, and, you know, this, this, we could do more renting so that can get kicked down the road due to spending money, so we're not getting stuff done for the bigger machine that we could or should be renting one.
Right, and we're, you know, that's the core, it's a little more than, that's about a third of the price of, quarter of a third of the price of, of the lease, of the purchase price or the lease payment price of that excavator. But the rental, at least we can accomplish the needs in parts that we really absolutely have to have out of the excavator. So, that's that rental.
How much, how much does a machine that size cost, 300?
215, 220, that's for the twist the wrist, you can do your ditching and...
And you spend how much a year on?
Rental.
Rental.
Anyway, from five to 10, and like you say, that's doing bare minimum stuff that we have to do.
Even if we spend 20 grand, you're still going to take 15 years to come up with what you're buying one, so.
You would. You would, you would, um, but you're gonna get, you're gonna get way more debt, because it's gonna be on the go instead of, you know.
How much are we constrained by man-hours, though? I mean, aren't we already stretched out by man-hours if we're renting that equipment anymore? Do we have the personnel to operate it that whole time? And if they're operating that, is it detracting from?
We do, because I've got two crew, and they're running, you know, using the backhoe now versus an excavator, so I've got a backhoe and an excavator going pretty much all summer. We do have a twelve thousand pound machine, but this is like a thirty-two thousand pound machine.
There, there were two projects that we got into that drove, we need to sort of say, hey, Mike, can we look into this for the budget for that coming here? Again, not knowing how it could put together at that point. One was, we had some, some road construction in Jim's neighborhood, that was before he got on the board, Mike. This isn't one of those deals, but, but Jim, that neighborhood, Alexander Drive, Ledgewood, uh, was on our plan, road planned, had that paved, and have it, we talked about that last year. And Mike found, it was, there was, obviously, ditching was what after accomplished, but there was a lot more, the road was in worse condition than we anticipated when we were talking in this room. To the point where a good, a good part of it was actually torn out, literally picked up and, and removed from, from the, from the scene. That's the worst-case scenario that, that we're trying to avoid on all these roads to get ahead of them. But that work was being done a large part by backhoe. So I went out once, one day to just see what was going on, and I got a complaint. So I was going out there, and I'm driving out there, and, you know, I, I, I think they were trying to do the best, you know, but it's hard when you have, it's right in front, and it's a hard way to, to work. So we're not, we're, we're kind of giving, um, a handsaw to someone who needs, you know, a chop saw. It, it's sort of like, you're not really giving the tool they need to get the job done. And the other part was, we had, Mike was away, um, uh, and there was a project at the head of the harbor, when they were grubbing out on the, um, you know, on the Central Street side of, of, uh, above the harbor near the bridge, and they were grubbing that all out. It was a bigger excavator, but we had to get the project done like right away. It couldn't wait for Mike to be back, because we had to get that, that machine back to, uh, the company to rent from him. And so we were sort of just scrambling to try to get all this work done, just not enough time. Those are just two instances where I sort, and that's, you know, usually if things climb up to me, that means they're gone, they've gone up a few levels, so. It, there's a need there, it's just not this year. And that's, you know, we put more money in for rental, and so there's another month that we could get that same machine, but we just need to be thinking whether, you know, how, what that payback period is, how much are we using it? We're just not ready to do that this year.
So we have it in as rental, not as purchasing and moving?
That's right.
Okay, great.
Right.
So I have another question, this is a small item, but just out of curiosity, what's the clothing allowance? Like, what do we have for clothing?
It's part of their union contract. They, I think it's three hundred and fifty dollars a piece annually, that they get to buy boots or things, whatever it is.
Thank you. Yes, twenty-nine hundred.
Other than what you listed, I don't think we've asked for, you know, things haven't changed.
The road construction number is a little different than last year, because we adjusted. Again, we came up with that number last year based upon the prices we were paying. So this number is effectively the same distance of roads that we talked about last year, but adjusted for the fact that our, our cost per time had increased, um, from what we anticipated a year ago. So that's the only change in that. And when you look at the number, the, the roads listed, um, you know, those roads are, there were some roads we weren't able to accomplish last year, because the Park Street project became the overriding priority. So some things got pushed off, and of course, we had to spend more over on the Alexander Ledgewood area as well. So there wasn't room.
What was the price per ton?
One oh one or one oh four?
One oh one, I think.
Yeah, I think it was one oh one.
One oh one was twelve five or nine five.
That was when things were fairly high, right? So there's a good chance with what we've got, we might be able to get a little bit more, because the prices are now in the.
I expect it will be within a couple bucks of where we were last year, I don't think.
Well, maybe that'll labor's up.
Right, what they've lost and gained in petroleum, we've lost in labor.
Uh, calcium chloride. Are you gonna add them up? We didn't buy any last year. And you said you can replenish your supply.
Yeah, no, we're, we're fine with calcium chloride, yeah. The salt, the salt may be a different. But now the winter, but we're fine with calcium chloride.
And then I, I see the paving, but I do have to ask, where are crosswalks? I see sidewalks, I see paving, because all of our crosswalks are gone now.
The paint, so the paint, the painting, so that'd be the painting texture of the crosswalk, yeah. So that, that is, uh. Yeah, three times the traffic.
Thank you.
So I hate to bring up my favorite road again, but I know Main Street isn't on the list for next year, but those potholes are getting really bad.
It's cold.
But, yeah, I mean, they're around that corner and coming in, just past the golf course there, and up by the Masan, those potholes on that side are getting pretty vicious. Especially after the last couple of days.
And, and every year, I mean, last year was a prime example, we didn't plan on doing. Come spring, that, that may move on the list.
Yeah, I know, I still think, I still think we should look at from Simon's Corner, at least, through that bottom sweep by a pass cross street there. I don't know, that, that corner's just bad.
I don't know, yeah, and that, it's always, it feels like it's always been bad, it feels like.
I think it has a lot to do with the way that tree used to sit there.
Yes.
Now the tree is gone, it dries out a little better, but you still have, the drainage isn't good, and it freezes underneath, and then you've got the water sitting down below, so it screws that section of road up.
Still get the side of that hill trying to move through that.
Right, exactly, yeah.
So it probably doesn't have a great base.
Yeah, I think that's a problem, or it was just run over six times and never repulled. I don't know, I, it just really kind of bugs me, because it's a blind corner to start with, so.
And there have been, when we've had available, we've had a little bit extra available, this is, we've been able to hit spots. Yeah. Something like over Russell Ave, there was a spot there, we were able to, you know, so we have talked about that corner potentially being a spot where we could sort of just hit, hit it with a something to sort of keep it together by a, you know, a few years with it.
I don't think it'll last another winter if we don't do some serious looking at it.
Yeah, and, and they will be paving over, you know, to finish that Park Street job, so.
Maybe they can get in there, yank it out and relay it or something, I don't know. Maybe, I don't know.
There's, I mean, we, we've talked about Main Street quite a bit, um, and if that was, when that comes up, that's gonna be one I think we need to put a lot more into our, our tree, our tree work. I mean, there's some good-sized trees that are sitting like right on the edge of the road.
Yeah, and I'm sure those roots are, aren't very, very hopeful.
Yeah, and if we're gonna be, you know, I think if we're gonna be serious about Main Street, we've got to open it up, you know, both the section, you know, this section up to Cross Street, and, uh, you know, that area where we've always had that issue right there, the side of homes.
We were talking, was talking about it again yesterday, so.
Yeah.
We're talking about roads.
Yeah. Yeah, it's.
Cemeteries?
Cemeteries. There we go. The biggest issue here in cemeteries, uh, is, uh, we had some pretty significant water issues in, in the CD cemetery, um, sort of some of the newer graves that are a third of the way in, um, there's, there's, obviously, there's the roll, row that's right, right near the road, and there's a number of vacant rows, and then it sort of dips down into sort of a depression, and then we have a number of, of newer, um, uh, newer graves that are sort of right, you know, on the other side of that depression. We had, with fall rains or, or whatever it might be, um, we had issues that were beyond sort of next-day heavy rain, where we had, you know, standing water, um, in grave sites. Uh, and that's just, you know, can't do that. You know, we, one of the, talking, um, one of the families that, um, you know, and, and they were obviously concerned and were willing to go out there and dig, I said, this is a much bigger problem than, I think, as much as your family is willing to sort of contribute to the solution, this is something that really starts it up by the road, and it goes all the way into that ditch that's, you know, beyond, um, beyond the cemetery. So, uh, there is, uh, Mike met up with, uh, Bill Wayne, Gravely Dorsky, and put together a plan that will hopefully capture all that water, some under graves, crushed rock, and, and that's being funded in this budget, and that would be funded entirely by, by trust funds, cemetery trust funds, um, and that's, that will be, that's how we would accomplish that. I hope this year to be able to start more of a stone repair, um, you know, reserve. That's not a new project, that's more of one of the, again, one of those, taking care of what you already have. But this is such an important, I think this is undoubtedly the most important thing we can do, because I don't want to go down there and see, you know, standing water in graves, I think that's just not.
Ben had to pump sites out within a half an hour of a burial, because they were filling out. I mean, that's, and that was during a drier time. You know, did we ever spend the money that we had for building roads in that new section? Because there was, there was some money set aside.
We had a little bit for material. We did build part of a road, and the road was.
It was like fifteen or thirty thousand, something like that.
Not that I remember. It's a lot of gravel.
So we're not doing anything with column burying?
Well, column burying is still on the, on the, uh, on the list. What, what I want to do first is I want to get Liz, I want to get Liz up to speed on cemeteries. Cemeteries is one of the last things you really bring a, a town clerk on board with, because it's the most complicated, and it requires sort of that historical thinking that you need to have to be able to understand how things come together. So I'm, I'm not sort of throwing her in the mix of that quite yet, but I will soon. We do have the money available on top of being able to make, um, make this project go from the trust funds. But what we had discussed as the cemetery working group that Helen's a part of as well, was to, to have, um, to try to sell a portion of a percentage, twenty-five percent, thirty-three percent, before we purchase the item, but make sure that that interest was there. So, but that, the cost, how, how, you know, uh, how much per niche, those are still.
And that's part of, I mean, you know, when we took a jump, fifty-three thousand to do mowing.
Yeah.
You know, we have to look at what we're charging, you hate to, but.
Right.
You know, the money that somebody spent twenty-five years ago was long since been spent.
You know, we had that discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, in reality, I mean, and another thing that, uh, did, did you guys come up with a cost to level the dirt pile over by, on Route seventeen?
Do you guys? Was that, do you get a number, or?
Haven't got a number. But we, but we've talked about, the last three weeks, a couple days or a few hours a week have gone towards, we're gonna start cutting. Yeah, so it's in, it's in the works as we speak, one way or another.
And for those that, that might be inquiring, the cemetery over in Rockville, twenty-five or thirty years ago, there was a pile of dirt put there next to it, with the intent on leveling it out and expanding our cemetery. Now we have trees that you could harvest for firewood. Yes, yeah, so. So. But you see, the good part about this is, hopefully, through the sale of the house across the street, we'll be able to fund taking care of that, so it should be a wash.
I, I think that's probably a topic or item that's on the top of less than one way or another we're gonna get done.
One.
So I do have questions, I, because, just because I don't know how it works with cemeteries. When you buy a plot, is kind of to your point, like the maintenance build into that price? Or, because it's there forever, right? For foreseeable futures, so how do we come up with that cost?
This is a portion, a portion of, of your cost is for perpetual care and part is for maintenance. And so you can't touch the perpetual care money, you can only allow the interest from the perpetual care money to be something you could then use. So the trust fund sort of helps to projects such as these, above, upwards and above. But the problem is that, you know, when mowing doubles the price, or things like that, like we quickly lose the ability to sort of have it fund itself, or the enterprise fund.
Right.
So it, you end up being on, on the, the hook for it. The other, the other part is that, that we've had a number of, a number of cemeteries, that cemetery associations, that were having a lot of volunteer work that put in to, to try to look after the cemeteries, and unfortunately, a lot of those associations are, there's not as many people involved. Yeah, so you, so we're sort of assuming some of those responsibilities too, um, which is fine, I, I think, as long as someone's taking care of the cemetery, that's one thing, but it's, you know, that's, I hoped we'd be a little bit further in this budget on trying to get a better plan on our cemeteries, because I, there's some, there's some money that we need to start setting aside every single year to, to make sure we start to get ahead. The Stones and Glencoe Cemetery are just not in great shape, um, you know. The Seaview Cemetery probably gets the most visibility, because everybody runs by there, or they walk, or. And, you know, it's beautiful, it's great, you know, but we have other cemeteries, Amesbury Hill, I mean, there's, and West Rockport. We, we need to sort of be real about what we're trying to accomplish. And I don't think it's like a great sum of money it would take, but it just means a consistent effort year for year to say, we're gonna, we're gonna invest.
And we obviously increase the prices of future cemetery plots to, to stay in line with the economy.
A lot of time that was.
The, it was before COVID when we had last did the book, and I don't think it ever got to the select board for their approval, just sort of.
Okay.
I mean, wouldn't it almost kind of go, like, as our, as our property value is increasing? It's property, it's land, right? So shouldn't that value also be increasing?
That's, yeah, I think that's true. Now, one thing that you can do quite easily is you can make that differentiation between resident and non-resident. And that's what, particularly the Seaview, a lot of Chestnut Street residents are like, oh, I'd love to have, be buried there. Well, that's great, but you're in Camden, and you're a non-resident rate, and right now, there's, there's a moratorium, so you're non-residents can't, uh, purchase, but, um, maybe that's one opportunity to increase the, the gap there.
Well, it's like one of our contracts we did, you know, the, no less than two point five percent or whatever the cost of living is.
No, right.
You know, attach that to it, like eight point seven this year. But that's what one of our contracts did in the second, third year, in case there was no increase in Seaview, just two point five, no lower than that, or whatever. So I mean, it's, it's an increase every year, it's not much, but it's better than stagnant.
A quick question on the Seaview issue. How much of that water problem, uh, goes back to the issue of the water coming off of that hill residential across that we had talked to Camden about fixing, because it's their drainage problem?
Somebody said talk?
This was two or three years ago, I guess, three, four, maybe.
Yeah, that, that is causing a fair amount of that problem.
So we dig up.
Is what you can do sufficient enough to offset the problem coming from now?
Yeah, we could, we, we're not gonna cure it a hundred percent, but we're gonna make it a lot better.
Of course, you also have pitching, as you know, pitching from the road as well, from Russell, well, I guess, Chestnut at that point, right? So pitching also that way too, so we have, it's, there is sort of a collection area that we're.
It's going on above ground, it's going on underground, it's just getting it from two directions, above and under.
And you've got that naturally wet area closer to Alderweireld Farm.
Right, right, yes. Right, right. Yes. Okay.
Library?
Cemeteries. Back to libraries.
Mike, thank you.
Back.
Yeah, we already went through that. It was like three hours. We already went through that. I did, I did.
I know. I thought I was not earlier.
Really early. You hit it just right then. You hit it just right. So, um, we'll go to the next slide. The library it is. So there's really two main issues here. Obviously, the salary survey wage impacts, which we've talked about quite a bit. Apart from that, most, most of this is really items that the endowed is covering. So other adjustments are really, not really actively funded. There, there aren't also any changes in it related to some of the issues we have with the water and all that. That's, that's insurance. None of that is covered in here as well. So. This is the library. Helen had a tough question. I know. She's got them written out.
She's seen us a bunch of a few times already.
She's old, yeah.
I did notice, I think this year we didn't post the numbers, people coming through the door, right?
Yeah. For the patron visits.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. And that's, so that's through the first six months of the year.
Sure, yeah.
Compared to the totals for the last year. Yeah, to do the totals for last year.
So that was one thing I, I want to mention because last year Jared and I sort of, we sort of got sort of headed down a road on that. That last call, when we look at all of these, all these sort of performance measures, that's twelve, that's six months. So you have to sort of extrapolate what a twelve month number might be. But just to give you a sense, so last year we were sort of talking about what's gone down and this and that. And it was, I, I, hopefully this is a little bit clearer in terms of understanding. This is just a six month number.
I'm actually really pleased with them too.
So if we're looking at elevator maintenance.
Yeah.
We're sticking in, well, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two was on twenty-three hundred dollars. And then we're at sixteen eighty-five out of fourteen already and we're still budgeting fourteen. Are we putting enough in there? Because if this is sixteen eighty-five through November, December.
Yeah.
Are we really sticking enough in this line? And if we're not, where's it coming out of?
Good question.
So along those same lines, I see that this divvied up where security alarm on bringing inspection of the fire from extinguishers and taking care of.
Yeah, by the foundation. Well, the, the library committee.
With the elevator one in there.
Well.
It's part of the building.
Yeah, that's infrastructure from the building. You want to start playing that game, there's probably some ones they'll try to push off onto the town.
Oh, there's nothing we're doing.
No, yeah.
If we, when our, what's, what's a real more, a more reasonable number over fourteen? Because why are we at sixteen eighty-five already out of a budget of fourteen hundred?
Yeah, I believe what we've done, and I think I own this one, is the fourteen hundred is for the actual elevator maintenance contract. And then, I'm new to elevators still, so I'm working through that process and I apologize. And then I think the, the other two hundred, whatever it is, is for the inspections that have to go along with that. Because we buy the contract and that's the maintenance, the quarterly maintenance to do things. But then there's state fees that go along with the licensing. And then I also have to like get the, get it inspected.
Yeah. So should we not make that sixteen eighty-five instead of fourteen hundred though?
Should. I, I think that's.
I don't want to.
Yeah. I think that's rash.
If we're going to have a line where we're overspending, then you're going to steal the money from somebody else.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense to leave it at fourteen hundred if we're really going to spend sixteen eighty-five.
If you're in the black at the end of the year, you just.
Yeah, but you're not because the, the only way you're in the black is if they don't spend all their payroll.
If we are looking at anywhere to move money around, just curious, the increase for operational supplies and computer office supplies. So they are going from twenty-four hundred to forty-five hundred. So almost doubling if I'm reading that correctly. So it's fifty-three thirty and fifty-four oh five.
Both of those lines are directly reimbursed whilst we're in that one. So even if they, if they don't.
Coming out of our budget.
No.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The other thing, Eric, about the elevator, this was something Ben and I were discussing last year. There were two spools of thought. We could spend less on the maintenance contracts and have, have more exposure in terms of what we have to pay. Should they, should they have a claim? Should we have a claim of repair required? Or do we pay more and pay a little less when they come in for repair? I chose the, it's a new elevator. Let's, let's try to, you know, do it on our own. But bump up the elevator, or excuse me, the building reserve by a little bit. So we put the building reserve up to four thousand.
Yeah.
And then, so. Uh, yeah. Let's look at it that way.
Yeah, but then you're, then you're already stealing from the reserve to pay the two eighty-five. So.
Right.
For two hundred and eighty-five dollars, I think the line just makes more sense.
It makes sense. I.
Well, that's my opinion anyway, but if you're an opposite, none of their own, whatever.
No, I mean, it makes sense.
Is there another one?
Anything else on libraries?
How do I know what's reimbursed and what isn't? It's gray. It's gray. Thank you. I was just going to ask if it was color coded. Thank you. I appreciate that.
And most of it's sort of the operational stuff.
No, it's good. It's good. My favorite. I like it. Thank you.
Living in gray.
Is the trust doing better now that interest rates are higher?
Thirty-eight, forty-one. The kind of low.
Oh, the main state deliveries? Yeah. So the main state deliveries, that is our interlibrary loan. So that's all the books that get delivered through a delivery service that sort of people get from other libraries. So the state of Maine pays for one day a week and then we pay for four days, I mean, another, yeah, the other four days of the week. So we get deliveries five days a week. And that's jumped up so much because of the, the state renegotiated the contract with the delivery service.
Yeah.
And it's all, it's based on the price of gas and inflation and the cost of wages and everything. And that's why it took such a big jump. Sort of those negotiations came out of really bad time.
Maybe they could use some of that fifty million dollars from a winning lottery ticket. And I'm saying that in public, yes.
Any other libraries? Can send that home?
Mm-hmm. Conservation.
He's in, he's out.
Did all my homework. I know.
Well, you have all this gray that's reimbursed. So we're like, okay, good.
I know, I know. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
You too.
A nice thing is conservation is right after library. So it just sort of, we could easily turn, literally turn the page.
Yeah, go for it.
All right. Again, this is one that we had hoped, uh, we'd hope to have a member of conservation with us. But with the hybrid thing not really working in here, this was. We got Abby. Abby, there we go. So the, the biggest areas of change in this budget, and there's really one, which is the water quality monitor. The, the commission had stated that they wish to effectively place a better baseline on Rockport Harbor. And if the town's going to pursue a wharf, the commission would have a role in that or wants to have a role in ensuring that water, you know, water bodies that are in good condition now remain in good condition. Or if they're not in good condition, we know why they're in bad condition.
Is the wharf the sewage treatment thing?
Yeah.
Why are we calling it a wharf?
Because it's a wastewater recovery facility.
Just so we can slide it under?
Well, you call it whatever you want, but yeah, it's, we all know what it's going to be, right? The issue is that I think they, they hope to sort of fulfill their, their mission, which is really to, you know, inform the public, assist the select board. That's, you know, the core part of the mission of, of the conservation commission and state law. And so really, there's no better way for, for that mission to be fulfilled than to deal with this big issue that the town has. What do you do? How do you deal with it? And why not have the experts who are working on this, this matter to, you know, have already been studying the water quality of Rockport Harbor and bodies of water all across town for decades to, to speak for that voice. So, you know, it's a, it's a sizable increase in that, in that line. But like I said, that's one where I think it's, it's money well spent. And I think, you know, the, the, the history that they've established and the track record they've established, you know, sort of speaks for itself. And I, I think it's, it's great that we're sort of, we're able to start to take that history and meld it with some of the, the issues of the day. So that's why I included it in my budget as well.
My only question on there is thirty-one oh five with the travel expenses. I mean, people on the commission that have delivered things to Augusta for water testing.
Yep.
And you zeroed it out. How are we, we sending it by mail or walking it over or what are we doing?
I want to see it zeroed out.
Well, they gave it to me with zero. It's down a hundred percent. I, I just, I'm curious as to how are we going to?
Yeah, that's a good question because they, they typically submit, you know, reimbursement to me because people travel back and forth.
They use their own cars.
Right, right. Right.
Maybe that's a chance to use this one over here.
Big though.
Yeah. That one isn't, yeah. Yes. No, I just, I don't want somebody to not get reimbursed if they're going to. And they, it looks as if they have been over the years.
Yeah.
And in the grand scheme of things, what's another two hundred and fifty bucks? You're talking, you know, multi-million dollar budget.
And I'm not sure if more hassle to track down the reimbursement than it's worth. And I'm already here to Augusta to go to Sam's, you know, I'm not sure. This was, that was their budget request with zero. So. I sort of.
I wish this was validated and see if it's an error.
Yeah, yeah. And it, I mean, it's just something maybe for our next cycle. You know, because I, you know, they do good work.
They do good work?
Right.
Absolutely. Yeah. I can, we'll put Abby on the, on the case.
Yeah. Got some text monitoring. Maybe they'll be able to contact me.
Anything else on this one? Go to Harvard. Okay. Harvard is? Okey dokey. So, um, couple, couple things that to, to note here. So last year, we had two deputy harbor masters who supported Abby's position as a harbor master. This year would be an adjustment. So instead of having two harbor, deputy harbor masters and no park attendant, it would be one deputy harbor master, uh, full time for twenty-four weeks. And then one park attendant for twelve weeks, basically just for the summer months, the busy ones.
Did we have the harbor, the second harbor master for twenty-four weeks last year?
It was, turned out to be less.
Less.
And, and that was largely because both of them had accepted, well, one accepted a new job that started sooner than he anticipated. And the other, he needed.
Family.
Family obligations. Yeah, that's why I'm going to play.
Okay.
So.
The park attendant less, uh, lower salary than the deputy man. So this is a savings for us.
There was, so Abby did also put in a request for some office help, have someone in the office, you know, basically toward the, the peak, I guess, peak hours. And that was something I, I removed. I didn't think we could add something new like that this year. It's a busy, it is a busy harbor. There's a lot of people down there. There's a lot of people looking to talk to somebody and, and get sort of that, that feedback, but.
Possible intern type position. I mean, there must be college students that are interested in harbors.
Well, and, and that's also something where if you're a retired person, you know, or someone who's, is there a better place to spend their summer than hanging out at Rockport Harbor?
There's some volunteer opportunities.
Yeah, that's.
Even not, even if not volunteer, I mean, I kind of go back to the comment made previously. This is one of our greatest assets, the harbor. And wasn't Abby the only one who was positive last year with her budget? I think she was.
Yeah.
You know, so to me, it's like, we talk a lot about, you know, new equipment and new vehicles. And if there's an opportunity to staff it so that people who are visiting here actually can interact with somebody, to me, that makes sense. That seems like a big investment.
My, my primary concern last year, uh, going into the season, or I guess through the seasons, I hope to have a little bit more work done in the park, uh, end of things. Yeah, we were blessed with a couple, two of those deputy harbor masters who were outstanding for the people in their position. Really got a lot of things done that, um, you know, just wouldn't have been done otherwise just because of their experience and, and, and knowledge. But, you know, the other side of it was, unfortunately, there's, there's a park responsibilities that are really not.
Some of the.
Yeah, yeah. And so that was a really, that was something I was hoping we could sort of scratch off the list with having a couple of young guys who just could get after it, you know, in that building. So this is sort of a, a shift back to sort of the former model, which was one person who's in Abby's absence, who would be somewhat of authority and responsible, responsibility. And then this third person who's really trying to tackle those, take sure the trash is picked up and the walls and cans and weed whacking. I mean, there's endless weed whacking at that facility. It just, you could weed whack for the end of time. So that's sort of the model of this, what this is trying to attack is, is the idea of, of doing that. And the, and the other part is, is somehow to support the parking issues. You know, it's, it's a dangerous point. Everyone wants to be there. Everyone loves being there. And they bring cars with them sometimes too. And to me, like, I need to find a better way to get people in there and out of there as easily as we can. Uh, we want people to be able to enjoy their time there. But unfortunately, there's some folks who take liberties with parking in a circle or staying longer than the two hours or all these things. And so we need somebody who's able to keep a better eye on those things on top of, you know, everything's happening along. And so that's a balance that harbor masters aren't necessarily, you know, called on to do. And yet, that's, that's who we have in those, in those facilities. So it's a, you know, as Eric, you know, Eric has talked about this a lot, about this sort of, where does it fit, who fits, you know? We're trying to do a lot of different things down there. And we need to have the rights, the staff using the right way to make sure that we can accomplish all those things. So that's, that's largely the staff changes. The building related items, we moved the buildings and grounds again, talked about that. Uh, credit card processing fee, for those of you who were down there and had to, you know, pay for something, we used Square last year, uh, which was, I think, a really good thing, moved away from Trio. And I think that worked quite well. So that's, there's the fees for that. The harbor seawall, again, this is one of those issues that unfortunately we have to be prepared for. And so last year, we set a reserve twenty-five thousand to begin to put towards longer term repairs of the seawall. So while I was trying to remove things that I thought we could hold off, unfortunately, when I was down. when I was down December twenty third and I see Abby and Jason on one of the floats as it's going sideways and water is going everywhere, that that idea went out the window. We had to, we have to make sure we continue to invest in that. Um, we need to plan, we need to plan, but but we need to keep investing in a solution there, even if we don't know exactly what it is today. Um, public restrooms. So, um, moving through the capital planning process, Abby had put in a request to update and renovate the bathrooms. The bathrooms haven't been updated since the building was constructed twenty plus years ago. Um, this was a hard cut for me because I think it's needed. I think it's necessary. I think the the bathrooms are already in bad condition. Um, but I'm making cuts elsewhere. I didn't feel as though I can make other cuts and sort of and and leave restrooms available. There are opportunities for revenue there. We have laundry that we receive revenues from. Um, but again, this is a big outlay in one year. So public restrooms were, um, taken out. Uh, the Canada reimbursement, so Canada reimbursement is, there's a, there's been an agreement with the town of Camden that covers Abby's dual role and and it's in part, um, that Abby is also the, um, ski patrol director at Snowball. And her time in the winter, she spends the bulk of her week over there at Snowball. The town is reimbursed, uh, by the amount that she's paid or but that that per position would be funded. Um, and we use that money to effectively offset what we're already paying her. So effectively, we're paying her a little bit less, taxpayers are paying her a little bit less than, uh, we would be because it's offset by Camden's, that is Canada reimbursement.
Is it apples for apples?
No, no.
So that's that's good for us how?
Well, because you're still getting, um, to speak.
Well, I I I'm just talking about this year. I'm not talking about last year where it was eight thousand something reimbursed for a twenty four thousand dollar expenditure. And that agreement never came before, it's more to this one, so.
Right, right. So the the issue is, what do you do? If you don't do a reimbursement, the reimbursement's zero. And then you're there, you're not offset anything, or you pursue something. Now, that's a, that's entirely a decision that could be made, but my my opinion is, right now, we've got, uh, a, is it a full time, is there full term responsibilities for the position between, let's say, mid mid December to, you know, mid mid March? No, I don't think so. Is it greater perhaps at times from, uh, you know, June through September? Yes. There's a lot of different ways you can look at this. Um, I, you know, and the town has debated this, full time, part time, nine time, whatever.
That's where I'm going to go with that. My next question is, when you were on the board, which was different than when Jim was on the board.
Yeah.
That problem existed during both of your tenures.
Yep.
And it still exists today because there is no real year round opportunities for a harbor master or else it wouldn't be.
So the like that, yeah, then can I just interject that as a harbor committee member? I mean, I I think we would all agree that although it isn't a year round full time job, what is required is essentially year round billability. Um, and that's not a trivial issue.
I didn't say it was.
Yeah, so I mean, I I I think that.
When we're getting paid eight thousand for a twenty four thousand dollar bill, there was not a lot of thought put into that before the agreement went in. And even this year, it's not apples to apples. So that's the problem I have.
And, you know, if I were to write down, especially with, um, this year with not having a harbor clerk at the clerk's office and doing the billing primarily, I mean, a third of my time at the Snowball, and there's no way to account for that, right? There's really no way to, is still with the town of Rockport. So there's still, you know, there's all the emails, there's all the phone calls on them and and I'm not, I'm not not answering them because I'm at the town of Camden, right? So I'm not not responding to things that I need to be, you know, pursuing, uh, permits for our theme of reimbursements. I'm, you know, writing emails, making phone calls, doing all that to try to get that done. Um, it seems like, you know, if I just, I mean, even my first year here fifteen years ago, when it was a nine month position, ended up paying me back for all the time that I came in, which ended up being like a month, which I might as well take my PTO then, you know, so it all kind of in in a way washed out. And, you know, do I think now with all the billing that I could make it a full time job and use PTO during the winter when I'm not really able to use it the rest of the time of year? Absolutely. And, you know, it doesn't really behoove me even to have this this other position, which is a fif-, you know, fifty volunteers, you know, that I'm in charge of of dealing with.
Snowball?
Yeah, and managing all of that and first responding and all these things that I do feel like are upping my, you know, overall skill set to bring back to here. But that's neither here nor there. But at the same time, you know, I am certainly not letting anything fall through the cracks of the windows, just not close on the harbor when I'm out there. I'm still, you know, putting in quite a bit of time as well as, you know, the day on Tuesday. And if that doesn't work out, you know, it's still fifteen to twenty hours a week that I'm dedicating to the town of Rockport because if I don't, it'll come back to bite me in a month. So, I mean, that's just, and so I, I I I understand.
And my my whole point was it's not a new problem, but it still is a problem trying to find something for the position to do during the off months. That was my whole point.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, and I think I I think that we've, you you know, in my time, uh, when I was on the board back in the, you know, Stone Ages, um, twenty years ago.
At age.
Uh, I'll try to put Jim into that. He he was before, but I think, like, we were, uh, you know, our harbor master at that point was doing, um, Leroy Dodge. He was, uh, his his job was to, um, you know, try to clear the snow on sidewalks. Um, and that didn't work successfully.
No, we almost got sued because of.
Yes, yes. It it there's something about having employees who are vested for what they do and keep them doing what they do. Um, and it's difficult to sometimes put square pegs around holes and and vice versa. Um, you know, I think we talked about this about this a little bit last year. And part of the reason we didn't put the Canada reimbursement last year when we're going through this was that that we had just received word from Camden, effectively they were going to try to sue us. So that was important, that was my hesitation, was I didn't feel comfortable in my budget to go down that road. Um, I think that we've somewhat settled, I mean, while litigation is still pending, um, we've settled that, uh, we can sort of, um, do this over here and 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 keep the business going over over here as well. Um, and, you know, the the negotiation in part with Camden last time, because those were, those those concerns were raised last year, you know, Mark and and others.
July second during his infirmal period.
Well, right, that was the eight thousand, right? The last year, when we went through budget, we had talked about it. And so I reached out to Camden and said, look, can we be halfway? Can we be halfway between the wage and what we're paying? And Camden said, yes, we would do that. Um, so we tried to cut cut it in half so at least we're not, um, entirely out there on our own, uh, on 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 carrying this number.
And when I, and when I think about you trying to add positions because we're shorthanded elsewhere.
Yeah.
I mean, there's got to be something that Abby could help out with here.
Yeah, we were in that period of time.
Yeah, that's kind of where my thought is, like, I I guess I view this differently as I kind of think about this and take it in. To me, again, I go back to this is our greatest asset, the harbor. And I feel like there's a lot of time and money that could be spent developing it if we had somebody dedicating full time to it. The bathrooms do need to be remodeled. When I look at the line items and where the money's coming from, it's overnight docking. People aren't going to want to continue to dock there if the bathrooms are crappy, if the showers are crappy. We've got shower fees in here, we've got private, um, you know, washer and dryer fees, all that stuff. People want to have a nice facility to come and dock. And to me, this is somewhere where it makes more sense to invest our F D E, our employees, and invest our resources because we're going to earn off of this. So I I go back to, in my mind, I'm sure there's plenty of stuff Abby could do as a full time employee, just working for Rockport, even just focused on the harbor. Let's get the harbor where it should be. That's, again, what's beautiful about Rockport, the harbor. We talked, when we were talking about parks, we were like, oh, part of that park up there needs to be cleaned up, but who's going to do that? I'm not saying, I agree with you, have people do what they're best at. I'm not saying Abby needs to go there where the weed whacker, but she could be overseeing it. She could be planning it. She could have the oversight. She could manage the people who are doing the parking and, you know, all that. Because I don't, again, I could be completely, I don't see a huge issue with parking in terms of people can't find a spot to park, but it sounds like it's more people are parking too long while somebody needs to be onsite physically to manage those things. So it seems like we're taking our resources and pulling them out versus let's dedicate her fully to what she's supposed to be doing, just developing the harbor. What if she was marketing that and getting more boats coming in to the docking and making more revenue come in? That to me just is.
Which brings up the problem, like you just said, you you, you know. I I've been down in law, okay? My home's down in the Caribbean. People wouldn't believe it, there's no parking. Okay? I don't know how many, I don't know how many cars spend three hours or four hours there. Nobody knows.
Yeah, I think that's where we have somebody with some more oversight, right?
But who's going to do it?
I mean, is the private police supposed to do that? Like.
Let's put in a ticket.
A little market up. I got a ticket for parking in front of Nine in June, somebody's doing it. I I drank too much and didn't want to drive home and left my car there and got a ticket. So someone's doing it, yeah, seriously.
In in the grand scheme of things, a civilian, a civilian could do it. A civilian could issue the parking ticket.
Yeah.
The chief would prefer it not be done. And we had been paying for a dirty officer to come over here and do it. So I don't know whether that's still the case, but.
We have, there is money available in there, the six thousand dollars that we have set aside that could go towards that.
And and to me, it's it's like, there again. You know, we had civilians that did it before and they made as much money, if not more than what.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, you can't compare apples to apples. But what I'm saying is, if somebody is down there.
Right.
You don't have to pay six thousand or fifteen hundred for somebody in Camden to come over here.
Right.
And write a parking ticket when you have park attendants and we're the harbor master, we could do the same thing.
Right. I I think, so I think I think that there's, the the difficulty with this position, this department is what I learned over the last year, I guess is what I would say, is that there is, the peaks and the valleys are so wide. Um, you know, when you, basically from before Memorial Day, but 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 largely June through July, August, it's it's a rat race down there.
Feast or famine.
Um, and, you know, last year, we had we had two deputy harbor masters who didn't have the park attendant. Um, you know, my hope was to have a little bit more of them out in the field, a little bit more of of someone checking, hey, do you mind, you know, I know you've been here, would you mind keeping your car moving? That was my hope. That wasn't realized, so I was really, I was disappointed in that. Abby and I talked about that. I think that's why I sort of the shift here, um, because you do need to have one other person available who can who can run the boat and can work with the voting related issues, but.
Because that's a, that's a full time job right there, you know? And just just and the boat side of it.
Yeah.
And it's hard when there's need there.
Yeah.
It's hard to have your eye on two hour parking. You know, it it really hard, I mean, difficult if not impossible. Because the two hour parking, when it really becomes a problem, like Jim was saying, is lunchtime. It's right about the time that everybody needs some, you know, it's feast or famine.
Piece of chalk, piece of chalk and a stick.
Yeah, I was going to say, chalk, chalk market. So, but don't we have in our budget increased staff in the in the office here? Part time staff?
No, uh, everything is full time in the office. Yeah. So everything is sort of locked out or, you know, the regular money for driving stuff.
I too.
Um, what's that?
And what you're talking about going to full time dedicated people for for certain positions out there?
Yeah, well, that, I think that's where.
It's increased staff.
It's increased staff, but as, but full time based upon that department as opposed to what they were sharing. That was, so in in assessing situation, for example, the assistant for assessing is shared between finance and assessing. And so the idea is to break that apart because there's, we're we're trying to put, you know, five pound of the, or ten pounds of the five pound sack. We're trying to get too much out of one person.
Yeah.
So by have, by spreading that apart, the idea is, yes, there may be some excess capacity that you're so, you know, allowed to to deal with. We currently have, you know, we we don't have any support for the police department right now. That's something that really probably does need to come back into the into the fold. Um, we haven't addressed that. Um, but there is, I mean, I think that's the pressure that we're feeling internally here is that, um, the fire hose seems to keep falling inside the building.
So you're talking about going from two people out here? I know it's it's off just a little, you're talking about going from two people out here to how many?
Uh, taking one part time, one one person who's split between two apartments and having one person for each department.
So you're adding a person?
Right, one F D.
Well, I said, that was my question. So you're going from two people out here to how many?
Well, we have three apartments, so three, three assistants. Yeah.
You go to one more than what's currently out?
One more than what's currently out. That's right, yeah, yeah.
So I'm not saying this is what Abby wants to do, that's not at all what I'm suggesting. But to me, it seems like, is there an opportunity to instead take the harbor master position and say, okay, in the off months, you continue to work for us, for the town, and you, instead of hiring another person, you do some of that work that needs to be done here in the winter? And then at the same time, work on all the other stuff that's coming in that you have to do for the harbor and maybe work more on marketing or something like that's going to, again, continue to increase the revenue coming in from the harbor.
I I think, you know, planning, organizing, that's really where where I I think we need to spend our time particularly in the harbor. Um, I think we are, because of those competing interests we talked about earlier.
Yeah.
It's, we are, um, Abby is the gatekeeper for so many different interests right now as a person. And she does a great job knowing when to when to do this and when to do this. And and that's really the position of of state law, and that's what the harbor master is meant to do. But the harbor master is meant to decide where Brother Tucker is going to put their wagon and and or handle parking or there's there's other duties that we've sort of put onto the man of harbor master that are necessary for the town of Rockport, but they're not the harbor master position. But those are very seasonal needs, right? So, um, that those peaks and the valleys, some of those positions in terms of here, the needs don't line up well with that. For example, planning codes, everyone's building at the same time, everyone's at the harbor. Um, you know, our tax billing and and our our student, our tax, but our, um, all of our, we're going out to look at all our properties and inspect properties to see what we need to list and ensure our our, you know, that we have good records of. That's also the same same time to see, you know, that Jill, that May, June, July time, that's when we're putting the commitment together. So unfortunately, the seasons, it is, it is, July in here is a a very, there's a lot going on for everybody.
Yeah.
Less so in January.
Yeah.
Um, what this year, we didn't talk about this, but one thing that I sort of put on, sort of tasked Abby to handle is the billing. So for anybody who has the has a mooring, Abby had to effectively, our our former deputy clerk, Wyatt, was the harbor clerk. So all the billing, all of the the letters, all of that was coming out of Wyatt's, you know, at working with Abby.
Administration.
Right, I mean, it's it's a hand in hand thing, but but he was the one who's, you know, who was sort of managing the system in part.
Yeah.
Um, and so with his departure, abrupt departure, I said, hey, Abby, I need your help here. So she took on basically redoing our mooring system this fall, from when we closed to when the bill went out. She was working with the online mooring company, which, again, I don't know who has mooring and who doesn't because not everyone does and I don't. But which her task was really to work through that whole system with them, have them try to rewrite it. We're going to try to have it be inclusive of all of your boat sort of transactions all in one. It didn't work out. They couldn't pull it off. Tried though.
Yeah.
Valiant effort. Valiant effort. Um, so that that was effectively, you know, I mean, you started in November after you got back from vacation, but that's a project that really just sort of, I'll say it wrapped, but I know your email box is full right now with people's questions. After you got back from vacation, but that's a project that really just sort of, I'll say it wrapped, but I know your email box is full right now with people's questions and how to work. And so. I, so I tried to fill some of that time, kind of, so, okay, let's fill that time with that billing, take it off the clerk's desk, put it in Abby's hands. Um, but the second piece of that planning organizing, that's something that, you know, harbor committee is starting to talk about in terms of rules and. And how do we sort of, and, and, and through that conversation with parks, you know, there was that issue about the sauna, we would want the sauna, should we allow to have a sauna? That's a bigger conversation, it has to happen and, um, you know, I know that the harbor, I'm sure we want to talk to that, but, but there's. That's, that's a conversation that Abby's gonna have to be, uh, you know, a, a, a key point in, in having those conversations and working with the committees. And then bringing those, those rules back to select board for adoption.
Yeah, so I, I agree with all that. I guess I'm just thinking, can't we shift some of that planning work to the off seasons? I totally get the peaks and valleys and everything. It seems like we could be more strategic around when we open and close those windows on those conversations and move more of the planning to the off seasons.
I mean, you know, I don't wanna be today's horse, but we're looking at hiring three full-time people, two for the fire department and one in here. Plus asking the taxpayers to fund a new fire station. I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on and it might not all be good to happen this year. And I know we'll make those decisions when the time comes, but yeah, there's a lot of stuff happening and I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
I, I have a question. Where is the harbor committee? I guess you're on the harbor committee?
Yes, I'm the best chair.
All right, now, so where are you in the comprehensive plan of what we're supposed to be doing down there? The long-range plan? How's the harbor doing on that?
So I will say just from my perch on the harbor committee, that I think there's a lot of progress that could be made in actually unifying the discussions about long-range planning in the harbor. Um, we have asked, um, I think the new planner to come to our next meeting actually to talk about some ideas that he's apparently begun to share with people. Um, without actually having a conversation with the harbor committee. So that's kind of where we are with that, and I think we would very much like to be involved with those plans from a, from a conceptual get-go. We certainly talk about it a lot in terms of balancing, um, and we were involved in the most recent, and we contributed to the. Strategic planning committee a year ago or so, and actually provided documentation, I think. Um, where we talked about balancing, um, various needs and goals of, of this harbor, which I think is. I think those topics are common to harbors throughout Maine, but I think in some ways Rockport is a little bit unique. Because it is still a working harbor to some extent, it does have a major boatyard, um, and yet it's also one of the most scenic, you know. Recreational and real estate revenue generating harbors in the state. And I, I'll stop in a second, but since you asked, I mean, I. I'm glad to hear some commentary at this meeting about the value that this harbor adds to the community as a whole and particularly the budget that this community has. And I hope that that's a serious consideration when talking about, you know, the relatively small budget of the harbor that's presented. Because this harbor is what generates a huge portion of revenue for this town. And I, we, it's amazing to me how siloed the conversations are commonly about the different aspects of the budget here. And as somebody who, you know, kind of works for a big organization where we talk a lot about siloing versus collaborating and thinking about what everybody's contribution is to the bottom line. I really think that's salient to this discussion. And so when we talk about stuff like the forty thousand dollars that, you know, needed to be cut from the budget for the restroom, the restroom renovation. I get it, but I actually have a really hard time kind of accepting that because I think the harbor is generating tremendous financial and other types of value. On a regular basis and stuff like this situation with these facilities is really a problem. And, you know, Diana's pointed out how it can be a, a problem in terms of, you know, making this harbor an attractive place for people to come and do overnight voting or whatever. And I think that's true, but, um, most of what those facilities are used for are the myriad park basically uses of the harbor. And, and local community uses of the harbor, which are great, and our facilities should kind of match it. So, sorry, but. I agree, I think it's one of our great stats.
Well, the problem is, is the, the, the more popular it becomes, the more demand is gonna be. And what, what really concerns me is we're gonna be flooded with. Food trucks and other people wanting to get a license for that. And we need a, we need a plan.
So I think what's interesting, and Abby could, can you sort of comment more about that, but I don't, you know, in the time that I've been on the harbor committee. There has never been any risk of being flooded by demand for food trucks. In fact, there have been at least one or two seasons where despite previous seasons that were incredibly successful with food truck. We were unable to attract someone to come. And that was a problem, because people really wanted it. So I, I, I would caution. I, I don't know that we're really at risk for being overrun with that type of thing. I think certainly the recent issue with the sauna, you brought up some things that have to be talked about.
We've asked Jonathan to come up with a plan and policy to address that, should it ever arise. Cause right now it's like first kind of first serve, but it isn't gonna be quite that way because we're, we're still working with the two committees on implementing the plan and. The split is basically parks and is terrestrial and harbor committee is everything on the water.
So I think to answer your question, Jim, is it, it's, it's coming with this reference, the rules document and then, you know, the policy for how, which. People have to apply for a peddler's permit and then go in front of the board, you know, that, that process is gonna be solidified by the time that happens. So there will be a process for those things and they will be, they will be, there will be a plan for it and there'll be a determination, you know, based on what, what whoever, you know, wants that.
I guess my question is, it goes back and, and you addressed Abby with it, but what, what's the future of the outlet gonna be for that park? Is it gonna be just for the people? You know, I mean, like I said, maybe we have been inundated with food trucks that want to get down there, but the more people come.
Yeah, but the, the plan is, the way it's eventually probably going to lay out is. If, if you wanna put a food truck down there, you would have to go to the, the committees. The committees would have to approve that.
Or recommend.
Or recommend.
Right.
And it has to go to the peddler's permit, and then eventually that would probably come to the select board, at which point then the select board would make a determination of whether that's something that's gonna happen there. So we're putting stopgaps in place so that, that, that won't happen. That's, that's what, that's what I was working with, with the committees on, on getting some, getting that solidified because we've been talking about it for years and I just was sick of talking about it. So we kind of got to the point where we finally got it together and historically, the last time that happened was your mother selling hot dogs. So that's the only time we've had two down there that I'm aware of.
Queen's weekend, open pair.
That was, that was the first, you were the first.
Yeah, Queen's weekend, yeah. That was the first time I talked to your mother about that.
Yes, you should.
You did a bang of jobs down there too.
Yeah.
You were pretty good, you were pretty good.
Back to the leaking mural, seems disgusting. Could, would it be helpful to put in say half that amount or some amount to start?
It would, I, I put the whole kit and caboodle. I put what it would cost to go soup to nuts. Um, but what I'm hoping to be able to do is to sort of section it out and do, and have, you know, some, um. The buildings and grounds, um, be able to do some of the work. The problem with, uh, the way the budget works and us getting our money in July, it's difficult because, I mean, we're talking even if this budget did get approved. Right now, to do it, we still probably wouldn't have it for, until the following season. But, I mean, there are things we could do, uh, with say half, but there are things we could do to make improvements incrementally. Um, but I did just put it all in because I was sort of asked to, um, you know, what, what it would cost to, you know, from top to bottom.
And I, and I would say with regard to the, your restrooms and need for new equipment, I mean, Jonathan and we took a, a tour down there and, and. When this is all shakes out, there's a great chance that you will have that. It'll just be money from somewhere else. It's just gonna get shifted from somebody else's budget over to there, because it, it is a great spot and you need to offer these things. And the washer and dryer down there is, that needs to be over to a transfer.
Yeah, and that's an interesting point, like whether or not the town wanted to purchase or own, I mean, that's, that's another thing. Right now, it's Jeff Wayman owns the, the units. And he comes and empties the quarters. I mean, we could, we could, in, in turn, if we bought our own, we'd have a lot more.
And, and we worry, we're still a smooth down and everything.
But, you know, so that's the bottom line. We get paid three hundred dollars a year for the quarters that he takes out of the machine and he's in charge of maintaining them and they do. In, in turn go, but they are, they are not up to snuff as to what, if we put them in.
Are the news better off?
Oh, yeah.
Well, clearly he's making more than three hundred dollars a year off of it, that's what he's paying us, so, yeah.
Didn't we say you could almost put two sets of stackables in there?
You could and much more efficient. I mean, you can't, I mean, I tried to drive some of the mats that we have just there and eat some quarters. But it's an interesting, yeah, it's an interesting arrangement that we've had there that I've never really understood.
But this is just where I go back to again, I think there's a big opportunity to do some thoughtful planning on the harbor and how we can both. Best maximize the space from a financial aspect as well as protect the space.
Yeah, yes.
And I, I think, I think the harbor committee is looking forward to having Jonathan next week.
Are we expecting to see any change in revenue, like overnight docking for the hotel actually opening?
You know, we may, we may, but I'm nervous about, uh, kind of putting it in. That's twenty twenty-one was such an outlier of like rage travelers, I feel like. That i- it just, it's really hard, it's been hard to, it's gonna be hard to max that number, but I do think we'll see, we will see things there. Um, I just don't know, I don't know what it is.
It's also, yeah, I mean, I, I know, it's also, I like, that topic is something that comes up at probably at least half of the harbor meetings because there's some tension about. I think how much, not tension, but it's a balancing act of in terms of how much footage you will use for overnight docking versus making sure that. Um, day visitors have access to the floats and that the pump out is actually kept open and something like that. Not a lot, not a lot of footage to dedicate, I think, to a lot of overnight usage. I, I wouldn't, I would caution people to pressure the harbor to generate revenue from that source when the harbor's directly or indirectly generating a lot of that revenue.
And then I, I, what I would think that would happen there is may, maybe not so much overnight docking, people coming and staying, you know, a lot of people that come with their big boats stay on the boat. But, you know, maybe some smaller boats will come and they'll stay in the hotel. So we'll get some smaller boats there, but what I see happening is probably influx of charter business, some day, day boat business. Um, so the harbor committee has addressed, you know, how we're gonna deal with that too, cause that's, that's a, that's a resource. And it's just hard, hard to know until we know, but, uh, we do have methods in place to charge fees for that and keep people coming and going. Um, so I guess it's just time will tell. Yeah. Yeah.
Here with our schedule again.
There you go. Anything else on harbor?
Sounds like the Agments used to have thirty-five years.
No, no, the Argents had that back then, our gear worn and that much.
Yeah.
Nobody could be here since then.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Thanks, Sharon. Appreciate it. The Opera House. There's, there's a, here's a light bit of conversation. Well, there, we're still, we're, we're, we're not far out of demo mode right now, we're still in the repair phase of, of that one. Uh, do you wanna maybe just talk about where, where we are?
Uh, as most of you know, there was a sprinkler leak at the Opera House right before Christmas. Um, damaging the majority of the auditorium floor and then the meeting room floor beneath it and the green room floor behind it. Um, all the flooring and damaged sheetrock insulation has been ripped out by certain pro. I am currently arguing, I guess, with the insurance company and what they are, uh, willing to cover on the onset and what we feel that they should cover. Um, when the auditorium floor was ripped up upstairs, the underlayment floor is horrifying. Like there's places that I literally put my whole foot down through, um, just, there was no underlayment. And it's all, what, two, two by sixes maybe that were used of underlayment sporadically. You can see where they had cut out sections before and replaced it with the same type of underlayment. Um, as part of the project, I feel that they should cover ripping up that underlayment because all the floors been ripped up and put down plywood. Um, we're also arguing on what type of flooring needs to go back in, uh, in the green room, meeting room area. Because the flooring that was there is not a product that's made anymore. And finding something that would be durable enough for the amount of chair traffic that's on that floor, uh, is a concern of mine. So like I said, I'm currently having those, uh, disagreements, I guess, with the insurance company and what they're gonna cover.
Are you anticipating having repairs completed in this fiscal year?
That's my goal. And even, we had several events, twenty-two, between the time this sprinkler event happened. And the end of June that we're projecting, that were already scheduled, that we're projecting. That we're gonna have to cancel all of those and our insurance company is gonna cover our revenue losses for that. Uh, they're also gonna cover revenue life losses for inquiries that happened during that time that we could have rented the facility for, but were closed. Uh, so that is a bonus that we're actually, that we will recruit that money that we would have otherwise have gotten, uh, with the rental of the facility.
So if we have fifteen wedding rentals in the next few weeks, you'll just, we might wanna wonder about that.
So, you can't even people say so. You know, I, again, I go back to what you said the other day, Megan, I, I mean, nothing of this personally. But I really don't think you should have to work sixty or more hours a week. And you, you're doing the EMA assistant, which is little or nothing. But when you're taking on the Opera House business, you're working at McCall. And then trying to do the fabulous job that you're doing, and I cert, I mean that, I'm trying to get you back so that you can just focus like forty hours a week. And if, if, if the Opera House stuff can be put on to one of the people you're thinking about hiring. I, I, to me, she's more valuable focusing on us, and I know the Opera House is proud of us.
I was gonna say.
But, you know, just focusing on the numbers and doing the day-to-day thing, I mean, to me. You're more valuable just doing forty hours here, going home and, and not having all that other stuff hanging over your head.
Unfortunately, fortunately or unfortunately, uh, this insurance stuff that we're dealing with at the Opera House would be my responsibility, whether I was in charge of Opera House or not.
Bookings and those things you're doing also, right?
I am not, Nancy and Carrie do that. So, uh, one of the reasons that we went to this sort of model is that the Opera House had never had. Full-time department head that was responsible for what was happening at the Opera House. So we went to a model that had somebody available here. Or, and there were a couple of department heads that were approached for this, all said no, except for me, I guess I'm just a sucker, but, uh. And then, so somebody here available managing the employees that work in the Opera House. And what happens is Carrie and Nancy are both rental agents. Nancy focuses on renting the facility to people that pay us to have their event there. So weddings, funerals, parties, somebody wants to have a concert, they're working with Nancy. Carrie is focusing on town-sponsored events, so events that the town is paying a performer or whatever, and then the town is recruiting all the revenues for that event. Carrie has also subsequently taken on, uh, the summer concert series at the harbor. She's taken on the summer concert series in Mary Lee Park. Um, and then other types of, she's working on the Donut Festival as part of the Opera House umbrella. Which is why we had increased the rental agents to both be average out fifteen hours a week throughout the year. So Carrie and Nancy take on the bulk of that, whereas I am here. So Carrie and Nancy take on the bulk of that, whereas I am here to. Manage the day-to-day operations of the building in tandem with Len. Help them with questions that they have or provide guidance for questions that they have. Um, work on scheduling the other place that we have an event attendant. We require. An Opera House employee to be at the event. So if a leak happens or a toilet breaks or something like that, there's somebody there to manage that. Also to make sure that uh, things are not happening that shouldn't be happening. Uh, and then we have a lighting and sound technician to do the light board and the sound and all that. So essentially I manage the employees of Opera House.
So which, and I'm assuming you get compensated for that.
Yeah.
Which line is that in and how much is it?
It's in the Opera House department wages and it, we base it on five hours a week. So it's like twelve thousand dollars a year or something.
What is the long-term goal of the Opera House? What, what, or vision, I should say?
Is to become a community center that once was. So we try to balance our rented. Operations with our sponsored operations. So try to get more rentals in so that we can sponsor more events like. We did a Christmas movie series for kids this year. That was a town sponsored event. We did uh, Contra Dance, um, which. Surprising to me brought in one of the biggest crowds to the Opera House in the last six months that we've had. I could not believe how many people were there. Uh, we did a New Year's Eve event and then the other events that have happened there have been. Where somebody comes in and rents the facility. And if they rent the facility, they're paying for the rental of the facility plus staff time. To, so they're paying for the event attendant. If they are asking for light and sound, they're paying, they're reimbursing us for Eric's time to do that. Um. Bay Chamber has really picked up the number of events that they have in there. And shortly after I took this on, we reworked our agreement with Bay Chamber. Um, Bay Chamber was getting a really good deal from the town of Rockport to use the Opera House. Uh, I think that they're still getting a good deal, um, but we are making more money off them using the facility.
They can stop using it though when they finish their building?
Monica has said they are not, that they're still, they're gonna use our facility as their sponsored venue. That the facility that they're moving into is like their, their school facility.
Yeah.
I didn't tell you that we were, that I've been, I've been getting phone calls with regards to your conversations on the. Uh, other building in our harbor that were negotiating your contract, yeah.
So, no kidding?
Yeah, no, they're not terribly impressed.
Wow.
Uh, the sprinkler system. Are we, are we gonna have to replace that?
Well, we just had the ca, the system cameraed.
Yeah.
And we're waiting on the report to come back. Uh, the preliminary verbiage from them is that it needs to be replaced. Uh, we, I think it was Phi got in contact with the person that originally installed the system. And apparently when it was originally installed, the installer told them uh, that they needed to replace the pipe that was coming. From the connection on the street into the Opera House because it was all rusted.
Hmm.
And whoever made the decision at the time told them not to do that and just install a sprinkler system. So that rust that was sitting in that pipe, anytime our system was charged, that rust went through our entire system. So now the rust is sitting in the sprinkler heads and it's corroded that pipe and they used a thinner pipe. Than what is normally recommended to save money. So that's why we have holes in it now.
So in that process, then we have to replace the street?
Yes, we would.
Do you like it?
So what do we?
Because it doesn't.
You threw a number of, you threw a number of Johnsons.
Yeah.
Three hundred thousand?
Right.
Is that pretty accurate?
Yeah. That was for, for the, for the sprinkler head, the sprinkler replacement? Yeah. That was the number that Phi got from his dollars.
So it's not working now?
It is working now.
Well. That's what we're gonna find out is if it, if it can sustain itself.
Right.
So the valve is replaced.
And we've put in a backup battery system. So if the power, if we lose power. This backup battery will continue to run the compressor that keeps the valve shut. Until Len can get there to shut the system off and drain it before it charges the pipes in the ceiling.
So. Worst case scenario, it costs three hundred thousand dollars and you can't use it. So, so in other words, if they come in and this fix doesn't work.
Hmm.
And we don't have three thousand, three hundred thousand fixes.
Right.
It's virtually shut down.
Right.
Because you can't have anybody in there.
Right.
Well, you can't, I mean, as long as the valve stays shut, the system's not gonna charge. And it doesn't matter how many cracks you have in your pipes. If you have a real fire, because you're just gonna let more water out of it. The problem is, is if it charges the system. Without there being a fire.
I guess we'd have to have something in our fire chief as to whether it's acceptable to have people in there if the system isn't working the way it's.
I mean, then at that point, that's why they have a fire wash.
Right.
Who's disintegrated for. Manually opening the valve.
But realistically, we're gonna do all, if we're gonna do this work to the building and, and insurance is covering it. Uh, you know, put a floor back into the building, you know, I mean, basics. Um, that's a conversation I think that's a light party to start to have about what are we doing? You know, are we gonna find, are we gonna seek this out? Or are you gonna start and really look at where all the, all the issues are? And build a capital campaign to, to address the, the Opera House. And we've been talking about that for the last year and a half.
Let's end that on to Mark's conversation.
I don't know how. We're gonna be there till April.
I know government doesn't have profit and loss.
That's true.
But Megan, you could run a profit and loss on this.
Oh, gee.
And see, and see where we at. It would be interesting.
I can tell you in the last ten years, the Opera House definitely has not made any money. We have had more events and more inquiries. About renting a facility in the last six to eight months than I can see we've had in the last ten years. And a lot of that is because when we first started down this path that we're on now. Uh, Nancy's primary goal was marketing the Opera House. So getting pamphlets to the chamber. Uh, we're on Wedding Wire's website now. So when somebody's looking for a wedding facility in the area, we're one of the items that pops up. Um, we have more than quadrupled our uh, social media presence in terms of people that are interacting with our Facebook page and Instagram page. So all of that stuff has really helped people either remember that the Opera House is there. Or uh, know that the Opera House is there. She's working with local wedding planners and caterers. To make sure that they know that our, we have a full kitchen, our facility is available for funerals. Retirement parties, birthday parties, whatever people want to have, that it's available.
This park can ever get brought up?
I. No. I don't know where people find a place to park when they come for our event. I mean, we've had events that have sold out at three hundred people. And not one complained about parking. I don't know where they all park, but they find somewhere.
But thinking along the lines of, of doctors and how COVID shut us down for a couple of years and nobody could get a doctor's appointment. And now that things are opening up, you can't get a doctor's appointment for nine months down the road because they're trying to play catch-up. So could the same be thought that people that are trying to get a venue or a place. Are trying other places and they can't because they're already booked up and they're.
I don't think so, because a lot of our events have not been weddings, retirement parties, funerals. They have been. Concerts that people want to put on. They have been, uh, Bay Chamber has really picked up, uh, the events that they're having. Um, we've had a couple weddings, but nothing that I would say wouldn't be something that would happen every year.
So in, in all seriousness, trying to get that on and be talking about it because the building's not gonna go away. The problem. Well, yeah. Needs to be addressed.
And we'll have that report by then.
And we'll, we'll try to make it less than a three-hour meeting, that was that.
Do you, do you anticipate, uh, with what you've seen so far? A, you never break an even?
Uh, the building is so old. Maybe if you took out like building expen, building-related expenses, maybe. But to maintain the building, there's no. I don't think it would be possible to have enough events there. To break even with the building mix that creates.
Which I think might bring up the question is, does that, is that the right spot to have? As the hub of the community that we are just shooting holes in our feet with sprinkler problems and the floors and all that stuff. I mean, we, every other building we have also needs all this work. And again, it's, it. I don't want to detract from any of the work and time and everything that you guys have put into it to bring it up to where it is to. Even make this a feasible conversation. Three years ago, I don't think anyone would have. I don't think, I would have just ghosted the thing, but.
Yeah.
The, it, it just kind of seems like we're tripping over ourselves. Too often.
And a lot of that comes down to, uh, one, not adequately using reserves to. I mean, when you have a building that's a hundred and fifty plus years old, I mean, it, it's gonna be expensive. You're gonna have to replace, I mean, the sprinkler system's thirty years old. Uh, in the past, Rockport has not. Been good about planning for its future capital expenses, which is why we go through that whole capital improvement process to begin with. If we had done a good job of building up reserves and planning for these large things that we know are gonna happen, you know you're gonna have to replace a roof. You know what, your sprinkler system's not gonna last two hundred years. You know an elevator's not gonna last that long. If we had done a good job keeping up with that, maybe we wouldn't be where we are now, but it doesn't help us to where we are now.
Yeah, but I guess at that point, at, at that point, still you're. We don't have the money for it. We're not gonna set aside the money for it. It doesn't seem like we're, I mean, I would rather have new bathrooms down at the.
Yeah.
Down at the harbor than. A couple of shows a year.
Three hundred thousand dollars more worth of.
I, I mean, why, why don't we just, you know, spend a couple hundred grand and add on to the harbor building and make that a frigging party center, you know? Kind of sounds crazy, but. Maybe it'd be a better use of our money, you know, especially with. This talk about trying to plan a lot more strategically on the use of all of our space. We could get, I mean, we're spending one, a hundred and something thousand all of the year. Whatever the net budget is for the Opera House, a hundred and fifteen grand a year. To have the Opera House. Um, there, I guess, when we could be generating tax revenue off of. Fondos spaces. So. I don't know, it, it just, it's hard to me to see that it's, it's worth putting time in, let alone anything else. Again, I don't want to detract from any of the work that anyone's doing because it's good work. It's just. Let's say you spent that time putting into the harbor, a new building on the harbor. Making a, something down next to the Lime Kilns that is the city center, which I mean, we're, we're kind of trying to focus on the harbor with all the. Party on the harbor and fireworks down there and all that stuff. It's a sweet spot, obviously, and do it. Maybe we could let someone else, private party, deal with. Deal with that. I mean, as they look at Sue Smith developing that and there's plenty of debate about that, but.
Sure.
It's still development in a downtown area that. Might be good for it.
You know, I think, I think you're right, but I mean, in terms of dollars and cents of it, it's, it's hardly, you asked this question, does it? Can it break even? I, I don't think you can. I don't, I don't think, I think. This, this, this is, this is one of those where it goes beyond my pay grade or Megan's pay grade or any of us in this room. I mean, it's really a conversation that the whole town has to have about. You know, do you want to invest in things that aren't necessarily going to break even? But. There's, there are other reasons, right? There's, you know, there's cultural, there's educational, there's, you know. Whatever that number is, say it's a hundred and fifty, it could be two thirty, it could be, you know, five hundred. I don't know. I don't know what the number is, but. You know, there's a number there that the community has to say, you know what, this doesn't break even, but it provides this and. You know, we're never gonna break even on schools or we're never gonna break even on library, but, but this is what we provide to the culture of the community. History, you know, I mean, this history, I mean, I go as a kid and going down there and the whole thing and. You know, those, those memories kind of flood back to you, but there's different reasons people have a connection to that building for whatever reason. But you know, in terms of dollars and cents, it's hard to argue. It's hard to argue.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've got an old RES site that there's just as many memories on that site, if not more. Living memories, you know, memories of people that have, that are alive currently.
Yeah.
And that's, I mean, obviously going to waste, but that could be.
Yeah, thank you.
So, I mean, there's obviously more to that.
Maybe a solution there.
Right. But, I mean, that's just another space that we could look at and say. Let's smoke a, a brand-new Opera House in there that might actually come close to breaking even. Because it's, if, if you have someone like Megan and, and crew operating. Someone, a, a place that doesn't have such operating costs, maybe she could make money like the harbor, you know? It's, it's entirely feasible.
I mean, even when you just look at how much it costs us to heat the place.
Yeah.
Like, operational expenses like that, maybe we could be able to cover, but there's no way we could.
And which translates in my head to, we're spending this money on. Feeling good, yeah, feeling good about some memories, which, but.
As you well know, this isn't the first time that that question has been brought up about this building. Since, since that went through last year, I think, or the year before that, it was on the budget committee, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alan, what do you think? I've been awful quiet.
Is it possible to put a?
I've got so many little blue check marks on.
Put a, put a advisory question on a ballot that says. What do you think about possibly keeping or disposing of a specific property in the town? Can we do that on a ballot? Because I think that's the only way you're gonna.
We blew like twenty-five grand trying to figure out what the.
Yeah.
Or maybe it was more than that.
Thirty-five.
RES and we still.
If it's numbers, you can, if you, if, I don't know, deliberately now. But yes, the, uh. But I, I think if we're gonna do something like that, the best way to have the conversation is to. Publish it in the newsletter, build it out there and then put it on the ballot as an advisory vote. Not. Not to say that this is what we're doing, but just say, what is your opinion of? Kind of question. And then you're gonna get at least hopefully four to five hundred-ish people that tend to vote in this town out of. About ten percent that do vote and. That, um. At least we have some basis to work off of, you know? If it comes back, if something comes back as a resounding no, then, then we're still dealing with this. But if. I, but if you come back and it's seventy-five or eighty percent that are like, yeah, I'm going, why are we doing that? And I can think of at least ten people off the top of my head that would be. You know, which way they would go with it, so.
And, and you know, you don't want to see this fall into RES, but in terms of building, Tom Secuti's center up in the union right now, right?
Yeah, right.
They've been going through this with that building.
And they finally condemned the place.
Right.
And, and now they're having issues with vandalism and stuff, you know?
We don't want to get there, right?
Oh, right.
Try to get ahead of that conversation and try to be.
Right.
You know, we need to get, we need to get information. We need to know.
What people think.
The, the, you know, the sprinkler. We didn't know where all that sits right now.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be June. I mean, it could be something that we. Yeah, but we do an election again in November, right? But I mean, ideally it would be during this process, but.
It would be nice, yeah, as soon as possible, but.
Yeah.
It, there's, I think there's a. We're gonna need more information. We're gonna need to have that conversation, but there is a point where we're gonna have to choose facts here, you know? You know, we're gonna have to either, we're gonna fix this place, or we're gonna make it work. We're gonna make it efficient, we're gonna make it work for us. Or not.
And if, if people wanna make it work, then they're gonna have to be willing to support a capital campaign or. We've gotta raise taxes to do it.
Right, exactly. And, and I, I understand this where this room is, and I, I'm hearing everybody. There's gonna be a loud voice out there that's not gonna wanna do that.
Oh, I agree.
I think we all know that here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I don't know if it's fifty-one percent, but I'm just saying.
Obviously, there's gonna be people that are gonna say, yeah, I'm not doing that.
Yeah.
But. But the point is. Somebody's gotta pay for it one way or the other. So if, if it comes down to, yeah, we're willing to do it, then, and we have to raise taxes to do it. Either somebody's gotta write the check, or we gotta raise taxes. And that's what people need to understand. You know, everybody wants to do these grand things, but then you say, oh, our mill rate's going up, and everybody's like, whoa. Well, you can't, you can't do grand things with a blank check. It has as much as just a zero on it.
Would be nice if you could do it that way, but it's not how it works. Yeah, true, true.
You know, and I'm, and for me, I, I kind of agree that the bathrooms are more important. It's the same thing with the harbor. I mean, that's, if, I mean, Abby's been talking about that for months.
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
It's like a little pain though.
I've never been there.
Well, it.
You have to get down sometime. No, I, I don't need to be there.
But I was just gonna say, we're going back to, what's a willing taxpayer wanna pay for? Are they willing to subsidize Abby's, um. Uh, salary for having time off? Basically, that's what we're talking about.
You don't put a parking garage where you're not.
Yeah. Charged for it.
Yeah.
That would take care of your parking downtown.
Is it declared a national registry building?
Sadly, I think it is, it might be.
Really?
Sadly, it might be.
Yeah, there wasn't their sign on it or whatever.
So what, what happens when you, when it's declared national and you can't maintain it?
You take the sign down too.
Right, I mean, it's great that they do that, but then they need to split up the money to help us maintain it.
I mean, at some point, we just can't. We gotta figure out.
Right.
We only have so many resources, that being man hours and money. To maintain what we have, and we clearly cannot maintain what we have. So something's gotta get cut. Something's gotta get cut.
Go back to me here.
Oh, right, I was looking into it, but a lot of times grants, uh, work with like restoration or it's not gonna cover me like a new sprinkler system. But he was looking into it to see stuff available.
So they might wait plays. I don't mind buying you something shiny and new, but you have to take care of what we got first, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we basically don't need anything new until we can take care of everything old. If we can't take care of it all, we just need to get rid of it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Not to, it'd be not, this is, this is an important conversation that I think the town needs to have, because it looks at a hundred and eighteen, whatever it is. But in, in terms of the, the time that staff or the boards or committees are devoting. The wastewater situation is so much more important right now for us to make sure we have good solutions for that.
Oh, yeah.
Everything we do, our future rests so much on where that conversation goes.
Yep.
I don't, I don't wanna shortcut any of that or. As important as this is, we need to keep that as a, you know, keep our eye on that ball, you know?
Yeah.
Which we are.
We're not, yeah, we're not discounting that as any, in any point during this conversation.
No, I know.
I mean, every one of us in this room know that that is the number one priority.
I'm saying it for the owl.
Right, I gave that. Yeah, I know, to the owl, we're saying that.
Don't forget.
The wastewater is the number one priority, because we have to solve that problem. Regardless of anything else, that is a massive problem. But when we're talking about budget, this is something we want to deal with.
And it doesn't even see, like, let's say you look at a five-year and a ten-year plan. The next five years are gonna include like Opera House, I mean, they're not gonna include Opera House, they're gonna be the wastewater, they're gonna be the fire department. All the staffing personnel with that.
Yep.
Whatever other staffing personnel in the town, plus you're gonna have the next round of the town, town office.
Yep.
Updates, public safety building updates, nowhere in there, the Opera House really.
Exactly.
So if, if we're not even putting on a five-year plan, ten-year plan, then. Realistically, we shouldn't.
Shouldn't be throwing money at, money after it.
I mean, we're not even.
Damn on it.
Right, we're not even willing to invest in a building reserve. For this budget itself, and, and we're taking thirty grand from it. Which I understand that's the whole point of reserves, but with that being said. I, if you look at the last couple of years, last few years. But it's also an easy spot to pull the reserve from and get decent budget numbers. But now let's say. We start putting into the reserve annually, that's another thirty grand or whatever we wanna use, and now that one fifteen just went to one fifty.
Oh, Helen, what, seriously, what, what are your thoughts on having been here long enough and?
I'm a sucker for old buildings, but they're money pits. I mean, you've seen, love to see the movie.
Yeah, yes. Well, I know you're pretty candid with staff, so I just figured that this is a great time to get some.
Yeah. The insurance will cover some of that, but it only covers. How phrase is this? No process at a certain level before the damage. They pay to replace it to that level, not necessarily.
Right.
To the higher level that it needs.
Right, right.
And, I mean, if you're talking three hundred thousand for the sprinkler systems and they decide, well, the subfloor was in existing condition. Had nothing to do with the sprinkler system, which is what I figure they're saying. How, how much is, and I should apply with nowadays is, I mean, I don't know, at one point, they were eighty and ninety. I think, I don't know what they are now.
They're going down to eighty-five.
Maybe, I haven't been to a hardware store in a while, so.
Just bought twelve.
But, I mean, that isn't a small space. And you're gonna have to replace all the stringers and. Uh, you're gonna have to replace the support piece probably from the underside just to adjust for the difference in the heights. I mean, we're, we're talking a good, probably half a million plus dollars to restore that building to functional. If the insurance doesn't pay.
So, yeah, Mark.
So we're saying. I, I think it's, I think it's time to have this conver- I mean, not on this, but, but at, at your meetings to have that conversation.
So if we could, if we could do a little data mining without getting too much into the weeds. You know, in the last ten years, how much has been put in versus how much has been gotten out of it monetarily? Just so that we, we've got that and we can start with those little snippets out there for people who hear.
I mean, obviously, the downside of that too is leading up to this, there hasn't been as many people that have put their time into it to make it.
Yeah.
Like it could have been, so you gotta, you gotta take it with a little bit of grain of salt, but it's still silly.
The major stuff just kept getting pushed down the road.
But, but some of those because we don't have time for it. Which is, it does stink, but we just can't take care of everything. We can't even take care of sidewalk. I'd rather have sidewalks than an Opera House.
Yeah, I think quite a few people would rather have sidewalks and ancient lines.
I mean, I don't know, as many as a sidewalk to West Rockport, but.
What? They can do it if you want or not. Probably gonna get one.
Yeah.
We've got a sidewalk out in West Rockport.
Yeah, it's called a ditch.
There's one coming down seventeen and out ninety for a little bit, but isn't even what the light was.
That was burning the sidewalk.
That's right.
Al Stevens and Verona were the only ones I've ever walked in.
Yeah. Well, is Verne still alive or is it just?
I think the. Cash up the voids is, uh, the wrongest. It seemed very, well, he used to walk it quite a bit.
He goes up Pleasant now, though.
Yeah.
He still walks every day.
So, do we have anything else on the Opera House?
Well, the budget's flat. I mean, let's not bury the lead on the budget discussion, it's flat, you know? Uh, so in terms of budget decisions, it's, you know, where we are. And, you know, we're not for a sprinkler leak on December twenty-third or whatever it is.
Um, yeah, but you know.
Maybe I, I.
Different conversation.
I still felt this way last year too, to be fair.
Sure, but it was, we didn't have to spend it. Halfway to the next.
Right, yeah.
That's what, you know what I mean, it was like more like.
But, I mean, it was still projected though. It wasn't a guarantee, but we know. We're gonna have to fix the sprinkler system and we also know, we're gonna have to fix the building.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah, but, you know, you could look at the sprinkler system as we're actually be kinda glad that it happened. Because if you're saying that the subfloor is as rotten as it is, that would have given out at some point and somebody would have been really injured. So. Yeah, but you've gotta think, we weren't checking that.
No, no.
There's no way you would have even thought about the subfloor.
Right.
Yeah, and maybe the top floor, where you got three hundred people dancing around on that floor, it could have collapsed and we could have really had some major problems.
True.
So having that sprinkler go off may not have been the worst thing in the world.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, you're right.
I mean, you gotta look at it on the good points sometimes.
I just think we could trade.
I'm being positive.
The town office.
What'd you say?
Just think we could trade the Opera House for more space in the town office.
Well, if, if you don't have an Opera House, you have to have a place at town meeting. Right, so where do you go? That's the mazonica.
Town meeting, board meetings.
I mean, yeah, we definitely have to have a space, but. We've got it. We need more spaces anyways.
We do.
Build a new Opera House and town office over RES.
Let's just have a town office that has a space on it.
Yeah.
And not call it the Opera House.
Well, I guess.
Make a decision really late. Somewhere in time.
So next Wednesday, this is what's on the, on the.
We don't just do these now and get it over with now.
Yeah, you don't have, we got time. Mark's at seven thirty, so we lost that one. So most of that's in-house stuff, we're here.
Healthy public.
You can't be talking, you know what happens, especially when it involves numbers.
So that's the, that's the size of it. Uh, and then remember, select board, you'll be meeting the day after that to do your consensus votes. So as you're sort of playing ahead for next week, it's gonna be boom, boom, right after, so. And then after, the week after that, budget committee will be to look at what those consensus votes turned into.
I don't know about that.
That will probably be a long night.
That's gonna be a pretty long night, I think.
Last year was a.
Actually, it might not be, because it might not be.
Because maybe no one will show up.
Cable this for a week.
Where is that on here? Oh, down there.
Well, you need, firstly, there's a forum.
So we're not.
So get a forum and then we'll talk.
So we're not meeting in the Opera House, I assume, on March?
No, no, we back here. What's that? Thank you.
When is it, when is the date that we, that we go, oh, on the back. That we go over.